Call this meeting.
Apologies.
All right, it is six thirty. Calling this meeting to order, we have a second for acceptance of the agenda. So because we have one more vote participant tonight, and also just one round everyone, this meeting will be recorded, all the votes will be done by roll call.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Unanimous. I would like to read first the DEI statement for the Select Board. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact politely and even when there's disagreements. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to be welcomed and respected. We ask that our community members and all who participate commit to these standards to support and respect our community. With that, we have a walk-in. Seeing none, we'll have a report out in town.
Good evening, happy December. We'll start with water updates. The water, for the first time, I mean, six, seven months, we're on the plus side, reservoirs on plus six, backpack food ponds at plus three. Average daily demand for the last week was 1.067 million gallons a day. That's down from 1.125 million gallons per day the previous week. Our reservoir being full, our water stream is lifted, we are back to our normal water mode at this point. Rainfall, last seven days, 1.87 inches measured at that point. Seltos, our water contractor isn't down this week, they'll be finishing up services on Foxhole Lane. Town Hall, Library, Transfer Station, Council on Adrian are going to be closed Friday morning, December sixteenth, from May thirty, eleven forty-five, for training. The library will reopen following the training, and Transfer Station will open at one P M. We've done this a couple times since I've been here, to wait for us and all our employees at once training. Five o'clock, our H R director has actually two training modules that we'll be doing that day, two groups will have to switch. So that being the data will be closed, we will have signs up, and we'll make sure the Transfer Station's flashboards will be announced, and the Transfer Station will not be open until one o'clock that day. We did receive the consultants report on the Lighthouse project this morning. I apologize, I haven't finished reading the whole two hundred and seventy-three pages yet. We do have a team meeting set for next week to discuss the findings, so at the next board meeting, you should have an idea of where we're going, going forward. Just one interesting tidbit that I wanted to share with the board. The Lighthouse landroom that we took off was put on in the nineteen thirties. That is not the same as the eighteen forty-one landroom that was on there. Pictures of that, so I'm sure there'll be a discussion with the historic commissioner about how they want to proceed with replacing the landroom. We'll make sure we bring that to the board before we decide what we're going to do going forward. Citrus Food Pantry, helping more residents than ever before. They were needing donation of food products that they can't get from the Greater Boston Food Bank. They're seeking the following: beef stew, canned ham, spam, hash, canned fish of all types, cookies, hot and cold healthy cereals, condiments, and salsa. Donations can be dropped off at the food pantry Tuesdays nine to one, Wednesdays two thirty to five, Thursdays two thirty to five fifteen. Additional drop-off locations are the Citrus Public Library, Village Market, and Shaw's on Route three A. Also, most of the houses worship the town also accept donations for food pantry. The Veterans Advisory Council would like to announce that on December seventeenth at noon, on Lawson Prominence Citrus Legion Post one forty-four, all the wreaths across America ceremony. After the ceremony, Post one forty-four and Citrus residents will place over four hundred wreaths on graves at the Cudworth Veteran Cemetery called Winter Wreaths for Heroes. The wreaths are purchased by Post one forty-four. If anyone would like to help out donations, can be sent to the post to help to pray the cost of the wreaths across America. Following the wreaths being laid in the graves, there will be a short wreath tossing ceremony at the Michael Kelly Bridge on Route three A. We're going to continue your mic group between now and the holidays. Please shop local, support your local businesses, small businesses at the back front of the community, providing not only a job but supporting local charities and sports teams. So please, if you're out there, shop local. I'd like to thank Sean Anderson, the Water Park Superintendent. As I informed the board previously, Sean has taken a job about ten minutes from his home, knocking about two hours off his route every day. So I want to wish Sean luck in his new endeavor, thanking for all his hard work here at Citrus. Mark Cloud, the Assistant Water Superintendent, will be stepping up to be the Water Superintendent at this point, and he'll be running the water problem for the foreseeable future while we look at long-term plans going forward. So thank you, Sean, good luck in this new job. We hope everything works out well. I received a text from Mark Novak today. The Citrus Athletic Fields Project has received a Silver Facility of the Year Award from the American Sports Builders Association. This means that that project took second place for all submitted multi-field facilities in the nation. Thanks to Mark Novak and his team at Tippett Task for the design oversight and August Construction for the work on the project. Nice job by all, and let's hope we can keep that maintained, and that's a very good honor for that field project. Finally, as we keep saying before the snow flies, if you're looking to apply, you want to make a couple extra bucks. Kevin and the DPW, we are still looking for cloud drivers for the winter, and that's what I have at this point.
Thank you. Anyone have any?
Yeah, a point of clarification. You might have said it, but I've not been listening. Since Town Hall usually closes on Fridays at eleven forty-five, does that mean that not this coming Friday, the next Friday, Town Hall goes all day?
Yep.
Okay, hey. Everyone hear that?
Yeah.
Just with all the water, are we going to do any follow-up question? Or is it too late this season?
Probably not at this point.
It's too late, yeah.
Hopefully this one is spring.
Thank you, sir.
Laura, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Great. None of them?
Amber Vannen, Penninghurst Road, is there an update on the store in Los Angeles?
Still working on it. I actually was saying a meeting with a consultant for next week, Kevin, I think you know us?
Probably not next week.
So if you survive those central numbers going forward, we do have a consultant that is supposed to be updating all the costs that the region has sourced from us from us.
So it is, in a sense?
Trimming forward, yes.
Slow like a herd of terriers.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you. And our chair will be joining us shortly, so we'll continue on. So next on the agenda, business hour and liquor license extension, New Year's Eve. Shannon, you were?
You were, yeah.
Owner of that.
Do you want to come? So yeah, I think, pretty, oh, sorry, Shannon, you were owner of Pod Fire on Thirty-Five Front Street, general operating partner. So pretty self-explanatory, New Year's Eve, obviously, we bring in, our business hours currently are approved until midnight. We'd just like to extend that for an hour, so that we're not kicking people out before the New Year's bell chimes. When we had originally applied for our license, we applied for ours to be until one. They were cut back to midnight. Our post hours until ten anyways on most, on most days. And we had asked at that point, like, what if on a special occasion such as New Year's Eve, we wanted to extend? And they said we could apply for a sort of special one-day exemption to our midnight business hours. And so that's so much we did, yeah. So that's, that's what this is.
Questions?
No questions. As far as I know, that there's been, you know, you're going game, let's just congratulations. There's been no violations that have brought to this course attention, so maybe it's a no-brainer to extend this to them not bringing a great facility.
Thanks. Yeah, do other places on the, in the harbor open until one on New Year's? Okay. I think all the other businesses have other hours till one generally.
They mostly have other hours, so.
Yeah, okay, fine, good. That's all they want, yeah.
Excuse me, Laura, you good, or is there something with having someone on the Zoom?
I know, I know, I'm sorry. No, just, I have no issues with it, and congratulations, it looks like your business is doing really well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great location.
Are you to like a motion?
Yes, please.
Move to approve an extension of business hours for the by-bah from twelve A M. on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, to one A M. on January first, twenty twenty-three, with liquor sales through twelve thirty A M. on one one twenty-three. Second.
Second, I, Ms. Connelly? Roll call votes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Unanimous.
You're awesome.
Happy New Year.
Thanks!
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Can't believe we're already at this point. I was just thinking, a year ago, when we were here for change of views, it's like, oh my goodness, so excited to get to.
It was almost a year ago.
It's like, wow. So thank you to all, everybody's help, we really appreciate everything that you've done for us, and it's been, it's been a lot, great, thanks, you guys, I'm very helpful.
Take care.
Bye.
Happy New Year. Only do one in three hundred, though.
Right.
Usually the nails long.
One another, we're ahead of schedule. We will, next on the list, we have a board committee applicant, we have a Scott Snyder. We have the South Shore Community Action Council. How are you?
Hi, good evening. Good to be here. So as said, I'm Scott Snyder, I'm a current board member for the South Shore Community Action Council. I currently fill a community at large seat, which I've had for the past six years. I also serve on the Finance Development and Audit Committees for the organization. So I'm happy to answer whatever questions you have about, and what we do. If you're not already aware, South Shore Community Action Council was created back during the War on Poverty, so announced back in the nineteen sixties under Johnson's program. And as part of it, they created these federally funded community action programs across the country. And so, you know, as an organization, what South Shore has been doing since then has been focusing on, you know, our mission is to alleviate the symptoms of poverty in a region of plenty. And I think you'll all agree that we've been very fortunate in living in the South Shore with a lot of the benefits we have in the afterlife, as well as some other parts of the country. But even still, there's a lot of, you know, poverty that afflicts our communities, and there are a lot of ways that we can, as individuals and as community members, go and help those individuals get through it. So some of our programs are focused more towards low-income families, but also just for individuals down and on their luck, having a hard time, especially during COVID. How can we help them through these short periods of time, get through, whether it's food assistance, or just helping with their heating bills?
Some questions? Yeah?
Just curious, how you got involved with the personal place?
Funny story. Are you familiar with Head Start?
Yeah.
So South Shore Community Action Council has been running Head Start in the South Shore forever, and one of their programs was in Marshville, Massachusetts. And I actually went through as a kid, and having benefited from that, I feel really strongly that that helped kind of set my life on a positive trajectory. I had an opportunity, when I moved back to the South Shore a few years ago, to come back, you know, and take part in the organization. So it was a really cool treat. The woman who was the executive director at that time had a daily, she found out about me and sought me out and asked for me to come back and be on the board. And so happened, she actually was running the Head Start in Marshville when I was a kid, and I was there.
And so this would make you the representative for our three communities?
Correct. So typically, we're required to have board representation from all the local towns, and based on population, we can combine a couple. So Hall, Norwalk, and the Citrus have been combined for, I think, forever. We also have a couple of community at large seats, which is, like I said, which I currently fill. And then we've had low-income representatives from all the different communities. And so because these select, select board seats are kind of hard to fill, often it requires an elected official to volunteer their time, like just being on a committee. If they can't find somebody who can fill that in, the community seats are a lot easier to fill. So we've had a longtime rep from Hall that took care of this responsibility for the past few years. He's since moved on, and we haven't been able to fill the seat, I think, for the past year. So the chairman asked if I'd be willing to step up and fill for everybody.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to know a little more about what else you do, other than Head Start? Do you do fuel assistance and programs on? Yeah.
Yeah, so they do fuel assistance during the winter months. There's a program called HeartWAP. It's an acronym, but basically they'll do weatherization for homes, so a lot of the elderly population, they'll help those folks out, if people reach out and they need some help just making their homes more weather tight. We are responsible for a lot of the food pantry efforts in the South Shore. So you have a huge food assistance program in the main headquarters in Plymouth, but they also lend that food out to other food pantries in the area. Recently, the past couple of years, a kind of a fast-growing program has been, we call it a backpack food assistance program. So out of our food pantry, we provide food resources in backpacks for kids in local schools to take home. You know, a lot of our families that haven't been able to benefit from having consistent good nutrition meals at home, we can supplement, you know, their nutrition, whether they're in the feed by giving a system to bring back. A large part of what we do that goes back to funding, kind of like the Head Start program, food assistance, I think, being the second one. And then from there, as individuals come in needing other types of assistance, you know, we've done things from helping, you know, people one-off, like an elderly woman who's temporarily homeless, we'll find and shelter for her and continue to subsidize, you know, her housing through the winter if needed for a few months, things like that.
So how do people find you?
Typically, I think that we get folks referred to the agency through other, you know, talking to their town representatives, other, you know, community members at large, other organizations within the community, so. Or they just see the buses driving around, just seeing the buses driving to our communities.
Well, so would our social worker, or our Council on Aging Director, or our Detention Services Agent be in touch with you?
Yes.
Or refer people to you?
Right, and typically, they'd be in touch with the actual, with the agency itself implementing, the, the, the team there. But for sure, as a local representative, if there are questions about what could be done, or if there is a, you know, a resident in need, then by all means, you can connect them to me, and I can help kind of coordinate, you know, finding them the right person to talk to.
Well, if I can make an editorial comment, I've heard your resume today, and Head Start, to be proud of yourselves, you're in the U S Air Force Reserves, you were a U S Air Force officer, a fighter jet, I can't remember, F C fifteen?
Yeah, F fifteen C is right.
I don't think I've ever met a pilot with those qualifications. So I think we should be very proud that you are asking to be our representative on this council.
So I'm happy to do it, thank you.
Laura?
Yes, thank you, Scott, for stepping forward. I echo Ms. Connelly's compliments to you. You had a very impressive resume, and you obviously are a very dedicated public servant in many different ways. So happy to support you in this. I do have a question. Where does the majority of the funding for the council come from?
A lot of it is from federal funds.
Okay.
And so they have, they'll still, you know, like every nonprofit, they'll still try to raise money by applying for different grants, but the majority of their money is federally funded.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for stepping up.
No, my pleasure.
Okay. Thank you for stepping up as well. It's always, I went a few days ago through the nine ninety and through the organization. It's always difficult, especially these times, all the different work. Organization does, you know, and as always, making sure that, I would ask you to try to ensure that all those dollars are well spent. It looks as now about thirty percent of the organization's budget is going to salaries, number of organizations, maybe, isn't as, as, as great as maybe we might want to be, and just making sure that we, make sure that compensation for some of us executive officers and deputy directors might be in line with other nonprofits in the area. That's just me personally talking, I would just make sure, you know, to be your eyes fingers that, make sure that those dollars are being well spent. Because, you know, some of the, the numbers of compensation for me personally were surprising. But I know you're back trying to make sure to look at that for us, and to make sure that all those dollars are being spent for those who are in need will be there, so before we begin our present presentation. A motion?
Move to the point, Scott Snyder, to the South Shore Community Action Council, as a town of Citrus, represented, for term of three years or plus successors named, completion of the conflict with dangerous law, our nineteen twenty program is completed within thirty days. Second.
Second, I, Ms. Connelly, roll call votes.
Um, who, Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
We're not going to put Mr. Vinnelli on this.
No, thank you. Yes. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Wonderful meeting. Good night.
Thank you, thanks for talking.
I stopped where I called Kevin Capery, but pass this over to the chair.
Keep going on.
DPW contracts.
Excellent, so we have some exciting contracts. The first one is for a new trash truck. We have been looking long and hard for a long time to purchase a new trash truck. We have been able to track down a chassis and entire truck, and this is the contract to put it forward. So the original trash truck we bought years ago, we got on surplus from the city of Boston, and we've used it. It saves so much time for the guys and everything else. They can't get one without it now, which is great, and it saves so much time, especially during regional ups, during the summer months. So we looked at different trucks, and Marshfield had got Ford F five fifty, and we based our truck similarly off of what they've had, because they've had great luck with it. And it's convenient, the guys like it, because it's lower to the ground, you don't have to climb in and out, it's, it's a lot easier to climb in and out. Guys are concerned about potentially slipping. So that's the first contract that we have tonight.
Questions?
I've got trucks.
No trucks.
I mean.
F two fifties? Laura?
No questions.
It'll be blue.
It'll be blue.
All right.
And it came in under the allocated funding, we just always prepare for the thing.
Yes. It's a hundred and fifty-two thousand, and the allocate was what, one seventy?
Correct.
So, under budget.
And how long will it take to get it?
Well, originally, it was going to be an international, what we were going to order just to have, but the last international we ordered, we've been waiting over two years, so we, we went with Ford instead for this one, because I got some confirmation from this sales group that they would have one, and they got us sending you out a Ford, and they opened up for the municipal department, it's probably two days for ordering, because they're so short on chassis and what they're getting. The biggest problem we've had is we weren't able to find chassis, because we'll search around in the old area for a chassis, but then all we'd have to do is move the gas tank. Secondly, move the gas tank, we void all warranties, so then we can't do that, so it's a, a long story, or we really kill ourselves trying to find that truck, so.
So what was the answer to the, how long?
I'm hoping a year.
So I didn't?
No, I, I don't, it's not made yet, the chassis is not in stock anywhere, they have to make it specifically because of location of the gas tank.
So in other words?
So it's going in for, it's going in for an order to Ford, and the municipal doesn't get first priority, they would make it for, you know, other trucks first.
Okay.
So we're hoping so.
Okay.
Any other questions? None, you have a motion?
Move the, move that the Select Board to board the contract to purchase a new twenty twenty-two thousand Super Duty F five fifty from McCovern H Q in the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, three dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second. Second, I, it's time.
Roll call votes. Mr. Vinnelli?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Unanimous. Nice. Onto the, to the equipment.
So the next contract we were looking to award was, you know, would Topman Enterprises, and we went up to bid, and we have a bunch of the slayings, so we typically bid for, for doing different types of work around town. We use it for the storm cleanup, and we might use it for drainage, which is to supplement our guys, or if there's too much work for our guys, we bring in a contract to spend help out, and this is one of the contracts we typically use.
Kevin, if I read the back, am I correct? You're, you're going to recommend that we award a contract to all three of these vendors, so that we have flexibility again and coverage, is that correct?
Correct. So in, in the three contracts, the three bidders here, they all have different good qualities, inequalities that can be used, so it gives us a lot of flexibility. For example, Topman's a local guy, he does a good job, he can use some drainage improvements, or rebuild the catch basin without a problem. And he has, you know, he bid our small crew work, but he only has two people that work for him. He's got, and his father, or his cousin, and then his, you know, girlfriend, they will need to get work from the three men, so. So they have that equipment, they do a great job when we need them, but then there's other times where we have bigger needs, and that's when, like a Seltos comes in. Because if we could say they collapsed, you know, large grain, they can supply a bigger crew that can do more work and be more successful, you know, more successful with it. Topman typically works, they're owners, so they're owner-operators, so the rates are also cheaper, and that's who we use a lot for our work. But if we have a bigger project, we could bring in like, like a Seltos or somebody like that effect with a full crew, loader, excavator, the whole line of ads with a, you know, a large crew, plus all the equipment, trench boxes and everything else that's needed. G Lobes is a third contractor, and they're actually a much larger company, they're the ones that bring in all the lining equipment, and we basically use them to help rock and do cleanup. So they bring in a very, very big loaders. That's why there's some significant costs associated with that, as well as, you know, when we make that call in the storms, which is all bend with us during storms, we make that decision when we're going to call on the cavalry, because we owe them so many hours once we make that call, because it costs so much to move all that equipment in, because it's all low boy loot and everything else. So those are the three contractors that we got.
So Kevin, I'm just looking at some of the equipment here, this nine sixty-six loader?
Yep.
Does that, the price is more than double what the other people are charging. They bring more people associated with it, or is, is this all for the equipment and?
So for, I'll, I'll just use for an example with a nine sixty-six loader, there's, there's different types, you know, and I'll just, I'll go by memory. We typically, nine times out of ten, if we need a nine sixty-six loader, we hire Topman's loader. If there was an instance that we really, really needed a bigger loader, because there's different grades of nine sixty-sixes too. There's, you know, newer one and older one. Newer ones are larger, so say there was a lot, a lot of work, we'd have to get a camaraderie, might need a bigger piece of equipment in there to do that work. But chances are, we wouldn't call them up for the nine sixty-six.
So my question is, are these quotes apples to apples?
Yeah.
So the three seventy-five an hour is, you get the one person in the truck, just like you get the one person in the truck for the one seven o'clock?
Correct.
And do they negotiate it all? I mean, that's, that's?
We did a public bid, we opened it up for a public bid. So what we're doing is we're wanting the entire package, but we pick and choose when we need equipment. So if I needed a nine sixty-six, obviously for a hundred and seventy-five bucks an hour, we'd call it top.
Are there minimums in these bids? Or just when you hire?
We have a four-hour, we have a four-hour minimum, so if we call you in, we're going to pay you for four hours, and that includes the cost to move your equipment. So if Seltos had to bring a nine sixty-six, and they have to get a low boy in, load the truck up, then haul it in from wherever their yacht is in comparison to Topman, just, you know, goes down the street, hops in it, and he's driving through town. The biggest thing for Seltos is they can supply a large crew if we had a, a major water failure or a sewer break, they can go deep, they can, they can get down fifteen, twenty feet without a problem, and they have the equipment to do that. So that's why we want that as a, as a back.
Well, I just, I just have a municipal finance question, is you do see a bid, you open all three, and then you award all three? I just don't understand that process.
So your staff will give us an hourly rate, so we pick and choose who we want to use. As Kevin said, we call Topman, he's going to bail, he needs someone else to go there.
Okay, and obviously it's below. Okay, and obviously it's below.
One of them.
Yeah, I think you did this last year.
No, the only, the only question I really have really is, these rates are also locked in for the extension as well? Kevin, or does the language read that you will mutually review the rates again at, at that point in time? Just whatever the language.
The language is typically, we review it after one year, and we each have a.
So, these aren't locked in for the additional two extended years?
No.
Okay.
Well, fair, maybe just go with somebody else's also.
Correct, it's, it all depends, you know, sometimes if we have a major Humrock cleanup, we're going to exceed our $50,000 value. So, it's a lot better if we bid instead of declaring an emergency, you know, Nancy, you know, killing us. We figure we go up and bid and get it all satisfied so that we meet all the state requirements for updating process. I hope that we don't have to bring G Lobes in for a long time.
Were there other people that bid that you didn't put on this list?
No. We just have these through this. And this was advertised in the central register in the paper. You know, quite a bit, and actually I expected a lot, I expected to see a lot of local people bid also.
Motion.
Motion.
Move that this slide forward where the contract Topman Enterprises, same to provide heavy equipment services on a per unit basis based upon attachment aid with the ability to extend the contract upon mutual agreement for up to two additional years.
Second.
Second?
Second, Mr. Vignali, we'll call those.
Ms. Vignali?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Move that this slide forward award the contract to Seltos Construction Corporation to provide heavy equipment services on a per unit basis based on attachment aid with the ability to extend the contract upon mutual agreement for up to two additional years. Second.
Ms. Conley. Comments? We'll call those.
Mr. Vignali?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Last one.
Last one.
Move this slide forward award the contract to G Lobes Construction A to provide heavy equipment services on a per unit basis based on attachment aid with the ability to extend the contract up on mutual agreement up to two years, additional years. Second.
Ms. Conley. We have, we'll call those.
Mr. Vignali?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Hope you believe in any of that.
Excellent, thank you. Well, you know, and we use them, we do use them for, it's not just stonewall cleanup. We use them if there's drainage improvements or anything else. The other thing is Seltos costs are higher, but they are using prevailing wage because they've got a much larger who's not the owner necessarily, it's a large. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin. Sorry, I'm a couple minutes late, and thank you for running the show. Our next item on agenda today, five minutes before schedule. The agenda are the 23 and 4 department budget reviews. So, as both of you know that are watching, we go through all the departments, we go following until the end. At which point in time, five minutes of forecast, come track of the number, two come with the number, we all collaborate and talk about it, and then go over the budget in its entirety at the end. Tonight, we've got about eight or 10 budgets to go over. And the first one that we're going to talk about is the library. And that is 610. How are you?
Oh, I'm awesome.
Good. I was fortunate enough to see your presentation at the advisory meeting. So, why don't you start by, tell us a little about your goals, your achievements, and then you jump on the numbers and see what goes in there.
Absolutely. So, just to talk a little bit about the goals that we have for the upcoming year, some of which we're already working on. One of those being adding some additions to the children's room. When we built the library almost six years ago at this point, you know, we had, I believe we have a very beautiful building that we wound up with, but we did have a very limited amount to spend of extras. One of those being play equipment for the children's room. The Friends and the Foundation have been kind enough in the past to supplement that with some funding to purchase items. But those items have been inexpensive enough that with heavy wear, they've broken over time. So, now we're looking at a couple of companies that work with libraries and educational sites to create custom pieces, could even be reflective of our coastal community. Those, as you can imagine, are not inexpensive, so we'll be working with the foundation, fundraising. They've already raised about $3,500 for the project, and we'll be looking to them to raise even more towards those goals of adding equipment to the children's room.
Jesse, what, what's the, what's the, what are you talking about?
So, yeah, mostly we're looking at play structures that would provide for like a sensory experience for the kids coming into the library. One of the things that we're finding is that, you know, many years ago, I think the library was a, 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 a check, check mark on the errand list. So, when you go in, you get your items, you leave. Now, especially for our young families, it's a destination. It's a place where they stay for hours at a time. And sometimes they take their lunch break, and then they come back in the afternoon. So, we're trying to provide a really robust experience for those families that are bringing their, their small children in.
And this is for inside the library itself, no?
Inside the library, so if you can imagine like sensory toys and things that they can feel and touch and, you know, kind of explore the world on them.
It is packed too, so maybe like, and then great recommendations, and then dog was there, and then, but it was jam packed, it was unbelievable. That was, so I totally understand.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's definitely a place where, where people go to, to do many things, so we want to be able to facilitate a great experience for our families. We're also embarking on our next strategic planning process, which is really exciting for us. We're just wrapping up our past strategic plan. This is a requirement of the Mass Port Library Missioners, but it's also just a good exercise for us. We actually achieved a lot from our strategic plan, even despite two years of COVID. So, we're really looking forward to what the community wants to see for the next five years. And it is very much a community-driven process. We'll have a committee made up of all different representatives of people from town, the town. So, if you have any suggestions for us, please let us know. And, you know, we also will be doing the surveys, focus groups, and a number of other things to sort of get people's input as to the direction that they'd like to see the library going in for the next five years. And then lastly, if driven by the library, we've most likely seen that construction is, I'm going right now for Thore's Way, and it's already looking, you know, really spectacular. They've, they've laid down the hardscape. I think it's going to be a really cool addition to the library. That was created, the hardscape is being created with CPC funding. The pollinator yard that will be attached to it is a combination of private donations and then some grant funding that I was able to secure last year. So, we have the funding in place for that project with an agreement with the foundation that there will be maintenance of that pollinator yard going forward. And then just some of our risks and challenges, you know, I really want to highlight a couple of things here. One of those being the demand for ebooks, and just a little bit of information about ebooks in the library. So, as you can see from my report, you know, we've gone from, you know, under 6,000 items, ebook items in 2013 to, you know, close to 90,000 in 2022. And, and that's actually a dip from the pandemic numbers. So, you know, the, it's a, it's a real demand on our library dollars, and our budget has not necessarily grown exponentially to accommodate that. The other challenge with ebooks and downloadable audiobooks is that a book or a downloadable audiobook that you as a consumer may pay 10 or 15 or maybe $20 for, we're paying 50, 60, sometimes as much as 80 by $100 for it. And it's not like we have that, that item forever, unlike our physical collection, which, you know, as long as the book doesn't fall apart, we have that book. Most of these are based on a 26 loan maximum, and so when those 26 loans are up, we have to buy it again. So, it's not a cost-effective thing for libraries, but it's also something that we need to be providing in order to provide equitable service to people for, for these important items that, you know, teens, adults, and children are all out there looking for. But it is a strain on our budget. We did ask for an increase in materials, which I'm pleased to see that Gemma supported. And that is really going to help us in this area particularly. But it won't, you know, it won't solve the problem. This is a problem that needs to be solved legislatively, and we actually have people here in town who are working on that at the state level. So, it's exciting, I hope there are going to be changes to that, but in the meantime, it does cause a strain on our budget. We also asked for an increase in our utilities lines based on the increases that everyone is seeing. And so, we work with Nancy on a 10% increase for those lines. In terms of our accomplishments, I've already talked about Thore's Way, but I do want to mention, and thank you all for supporting Going Fine Free. We've been able to implement that now, and people are very pleased. I'm not, you know, at this point saying any negatives to this. I think it's, it's been a really nice work in ways in our patrons to help that added to their services. And then I just wanted to mention, you know, we had about 300,000 items circulated to situate residents last year. And the thing that I was most excited to see is that we could, we compared our numbers not to the past two years, which are so unusual, but we went back to the last normal year of 2019. And we've had an increase of 23% material checkouts for children and 26% for teens. So, we think that's really exciting. It's great news for our children and our teens and our community, and I think it's a great reflection on, yes, the library, but also the schools and the families in this town that people are reading to this level. So, I'm just excited about that. That's all I really have to share with the happy name for any questions.
Thank you. Quick summary of the numbers. The budget for the department is 1.16 million dollars. The notable increases you mentioned are electricity, which I believe Nancy is probably increasing in all departments. And then $25,000 increase in books and other media. Last year's budget was 1.12, so a $40,000 increase.
I did just want to clarify that that $25,000 is actually an increase of 10,000 because we're moving 15 from a different line, only because that other subscriptions line is a bit outdated for the way we purchase materials now. So, we're just asking for one simple line for all of the library materials that we purchase. So, that 15 is being moved to that books and other media line, but we are asking for that $10,000 increase.
Are you still buying subscriptions?
Yes, but they sort of break down in very different ways now because some of our subscriptions are electronic. Some of them are still in print, but that print subscription is, is very reduced these days.
Any questions?
Yeah, just thinking about your issue related to electronic books and real books. I'm sure librarians are trying to figure this out, but if you're doing ebooks, does that decrease the number of physical books you might need? So, in other words, whenever there's a bestseller, everyone's at the library, they used to be at the library, try to get on the list to get whatever that book is. Now, if you, if they're available in ebook, does that mean that you might be able to, instead of ordering 10 of the one book bestseller, whatever it is, you could order five instead? Are you trying to balance that way?
Um, you know, the print circulation has gone down slightly, but we're talking about like percentage points, not double digits. So, that might help us offset that budget just a little bit. It doesn't help us as much as you would hope.
Yeah.
Because, you know, what's happened, and I think especially post-COVID, is a lot of folks who really love ebooks, and there's a, a large group out there, weren't necessarily aware of the fact that libraries lent ebooks, but everybody found out during COVID, because everybody was doing everything they could. So, I think that's also kind of raised our usage a little bit, so we're playing catch up a little bit with that as well.
So, if someone comes in and wants the ebook and there are no more ebooks left because all 26 are out, are they taking the, the physical book?
Um, yeah, I mean, we have a lot of people who'll, they'll put their name on for the print, the large print, the physical, the audio. Whatever, whatever comes in first, sorry. Yeah, it's complicated.
Yeah. That's it. Just a quick question, I know that the meeting rooms have been half, half, half all the time, and that system seems to be working really well. And the building, you know, just from like walking through, it seems to be holding up well. It looks great, and do you have any, is there anything that you want to note that, you know, it's on your resume for kids, like it's been six years, it's healthy, that is looking tired rather than improvements that we've done in the first year?
Yeah, we're, I don't think we're seeing major issues. We do know about the A-Track issue that we're chasing down, that's, that's problematic. And I don't think that's really, you know, all of our new systems are challenging. But I haven't seen a lot of serious wear into the building. We could maybe use some paint and a rim or two, but Kevin Kelly has that on the castle plan. One thing we are noticing that I'm going to be approaching the foundation about is our study room space is extremely in demand, and we are having a really hard time meeting that demand right now. And there are some companies out there that are selling freestanding modular spaces that could be embedded within an existing space. So, that is something that we're looking at, again, hoping to get foundation support for that. There's a lease option for one of those companies. So, that is something that we're thinking about doing as a way to sort of change the space and potentially add to its, its usability. Yeah. People, lots.
Any other questions?
It's actually more of a large budget, this budget, as you said, the electricity budget, I think that's a 10% increase. I mean, humbly, I'm nervous, that's not enough for all of the department. If I read the paper, we're talking 20, 30% increases in the last few years. I just want to mark it. That's possible, of course, to talk about with large.
Nancy, I assume you're doing some analysis of that?
Yeah, I mean, so hollow right now. We also have facilities budget to claw back on, the utility money as well. If something should happen to Jesse's budget, attempt to set up a basic issue.
Talking about a time period that is, you know, most a year away. But, no, yeah. Laura, any questions?
Um, just a question and a comment, thank you, Tony. Jesse, just thank you to you and your staff. I, I'm really impressed at how you continue to kind of stay ahead of the curve and really deliver great services for the community. And I was intrigued by the ridiculous price that you have to pay for those ebooks. So, I'm glad to hear that somebody's fighting that for you. Who, who is doing that? Who is leading that charge, Jesse?
So, I'm, I am, I don't have his name in front of me, I believe his last name is Courtney. He works at Harvard, and he is currently working with state legislators to draft some legislation. They've actually tried to do this in, I believe it's Maryland, and it failed. It was, it was rejected, and so they're taking the lessons from that and trying to adapt the legislation that they're writing. Because libraries typically have that first right of sale, that's sort of that copyright law that allows us to lend repeatedly because we own that first item. And that does not apply to ebooks. So, that's what they're really trying to do is to get something like that in place for ebooks and downloadable audiobooks as well.
Okay, thank you, because I think it's something that, you know, we as a board really should support as well. It's a ridiculous difference.
Yeah.
Really impacting the budget.
Absolutely. Here.
Okay.
Sounds like a national issue to me. It sounds like the American Association of Librarians should be stamping their feet.
So, the ALA has been working on this issue literally for the past 10 years. And unfortunately, what was the big six publishers now is the big five. They keep getting less, which actually makes it a lot harder for us. And they're very powerful, they have a lot of money. As you can imagine, the American Library Association does not play with that, those funds. So, you know, we're really, people out there are fighting a good fight, but it is a hard. So you know, we're really, people out there are fighting a good fight, but it is a hard fight because we're up against very big, very big companies.
Right, well, thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, one other question about the, I understand all the library computers were replaced this year?
Yes.
Yes, did that come from the town budget, Gem?
Sorry.
It came from the technology budget for the whole town?
It was.
So when?
I think it was the overage. It was a special town meeting vote.
You said again?
It was central. A special town meeting vote.
Oh, it was. That was a finding. So in that technology budget, it's almost all the town departments, including the library and whoever else needs it.
Yes, this is specific for the the library.
Okay, that's great. I know they get a lot of use.
Just thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Good, we'll break this at the end of episode four.
Thank you.
You guys look good.
I'll be right back.
Thanks.
Jesse, do you want to go over?
You want to go to the other departments?
Mike, IT, this is Department 155. Say that again? Great, so if you can tell us what you've done, what you want to do, and then we can all, you know, chalk it up.
So we continue to replace our servers. So there are different vintages of servers between the company originally created, Microsoft. It supports them for so many years, since it's always a whole operating, if you will. So that's an ongoing effort. We've expanded the voiceover acting phone system to all buildings that didn't previously have it, which is why our sewer, Ibermaster, Iber Department, I don't know if it's somebody else, Voice Walk. Recreation Hall, Recreation Library, or Recital. We have replaced the majority of the town's firewalls. Manufacturer anticipated end of life, so they're not going to support it. We're not going to get the subscription, the the security subscription. So we have to replace them. So we've replaced almost all the town firewalls. We have all but public safety replaced. And that one is probably an indicator capital, I believe that's our primary point of presence on the internet. We have two stackers where we're going to see that's, it's pricing. Some other candidates over my budget. And then we continue to, uh, do the, the security awareness training for the town. We have over 98% retention rate. We're getting discounts on our insurance policy because of our, you know, our participation in the required to be, uh, to be completed. So we did turn off their access. We've had a number of people just decide to do it. I don't even, I don't even know, or network access, just targeted. Just finished building a new, the next generation of the MUNIS servers. So built up that environment. MUNIS loaded up all their software. We're getting to see what the next project looks like now. As you were going earlier, we replaced all the public computers in the library, 21 in total. We added a 65 inch display in their live conference room and 55 inch display for presentations in their small conference room. Here at Town Hall, we're in the middle of replacing all the, I said, no, a long time ago, February, we replaced all the printers and copiers. And unfortunately, some of them still might come in because of supply chain issues, even though it was happening in February. And we literally are ducting some of the printers. So on a given basis, they're struggling to keep running. Unfortunately, ongoing day-to-day support from people's requests. Upcoming, we have, of course, this ongoing cybersecurity day-to-day. And we've seen in this past year, we've seen more cyber attacks against us personally than the industry lot. But we've seen more toward the town of Situate than we ever have. Footnote, you know, we really started looking for past two years. We've got some tools that help us gain that visibility. But just last year, along with the previous year, the, the number of attempts have been significantly going up. Continuing to develop a phone tower network. We have a grant, we've got one grant for fiber office, $2,000. It's going to help connect some fiber points. It's going to give redundancy. So if somebody comes, it's a telephone pole, one on one section of the roadway, the fiber for that particular building is those areas, we go the other way. More on that in a couple of weeks for your next meeting. We have a contract signed. The EOC's audiovisual system, although right now it's only, I think, six years old, it's dying a, I would love to see a slowdown. It's actually been pretty quick. We've, we've lost the, one of the monitors. We have three out of the six monitors that have some kind of problem. One of them's completely dead. We've been with, we're past that for three months. They can't find the parts. Monitors of three generations old, lived in six years. So our options are pretty limited right now. So we've launched a projector and a screen. And then just today, we found out that the HDMI input on the wall is dead. And the manufacturer, by committee discontinued that three years ago. It's replacing this $4,000. And we thankfully salvaged one out of another area of redundancy opened in. But it's just, there are some other issues with it. So that's a capital request that's coming out in the next fiscal year. We're going to work on that. And then upcoming is more additional phone work. We have the gateways that need to be replaced. Manufacturers end of life, going dead left, goes away the phone carrier plug into, and then all our phones connected to. And then last but not least, converting our phone service is open from one technology to another technology. So PRI, it's a really old technology. It's dedicated, it's hardwired, can't be changed. Something called SIP. And then SIP just runs over the internet. So we're going to have one come in public safety, one come into Town Hall. If something happens, somebody takes out a telephone pole, and they're two different carriers. One, if something happens with A, it will automatically fail over B. And then we can route that traffic back up to the opposite building. And then it comes into Town Hall, supports all our other buildings. Everything that comes into public safety supports all public safety right now, so. And that's, it's long and short.
Mike, can you tell us, have you made any other work on the providing internet service for the town? I think that was probably about a year ago.
For the residents?
Yeah.
No, so when, when that came for you guys and it didn't go anywhere? So the conversation stopped there.
So that's no longer a deep issue?
No.
Yeah, I just thought that was really interesting and kind of cost a factor. It'll be a nice benefit for our residents to get internet for, you know, seven, eight, 12 months, of course.
The only community that's still going forward right now is Quincy.
Say that again?
The only community that's still pushing forward there is Quincy. Most of the communities with the cost has gotten so high, it's like.
It wasn't Westfield one of the communities and they're running into issues out there from Town Hall?
Westfield's running it for several surrounding, smaller community areas. So it's themselves plus a bunch of us. Their model is slightly different. They're, they're, they're really a full contact.
There you go. Did you hear that?
Any questions, Mike?
Although some of them were just going to have, not even what he says. I'm glad that you are on top of it. This may not be a question for you, for Seth, if anybody's listening. The community TV, accessibility of the library, that was something that has been, is that something that you would work with, partner with Seth, or is that a, is that a community TV thing? To be able to do this kind of broadcasting out of that room?
So I, it's a Seth thing, but I have a little bit of knowledge on it from way back when. I know Comcast, somebody designated the EOC and the library as an origination point. Comcast had run fiber into both of those locations and that's all over.
Okay, well, we'll put Seth on the spot there too. And I just want to, my other comment was the training that the staff does for cybersecurity. You know, it's grumble when we get to you now, but I'll tell you, it has, it has really been very useful. I know personally, I've been like, we got it in it, and because we get spanned all the time.
Yeah, so me, you know, it's funny, when we first started doing it three years ago, I used to get like all exaggerative, like death, you know, death threats, but it seemed, felt like it, right? It was like, I, I literally told, why are you afraid to drive down the road, you know? But that is, it's changing. The conversation's changing a lot. Now it's, people coming on, I hate, that was awesome. I really did that in my personal life. It helped me with this and, and that was some really good training. I didn't know that. So the conversation's changing and people have kind of gone a little bit of change.
That's fine, then thank you for that. Well, I'm one of the guards, so sorry. I have technical issues.
Laura, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Hi, Mike.
Hi, Tony.
How long has your network administrator role been vacant?
So we started looking in July, but the position wasn't actually funded until September.
Okay.
And, and we just hired two weeks ago.
Oh, okay, good.
Oh, great.
Okay, good. That makes me feel better.
Thank you.
Karen, is that good? We should tell them her name so they get caught on.
And it's, her, her name's Karen Waters, by the way. She came from, we, we were fortunate enough to get her from the town, you know.
Karen Waters? Did she start the next week, you said?
She started two weeks ago.
Oh, she's done.
We moved to Thanksgiving.
You're not having to make Karen's time. Save some.
Don't say it. No, I'm saying. Technical services, we're talking about that. So it's in trouble. Any, first of all, thank you for, really, you didn't know when, usually you fix the IT itself, something goes wrong. Like, why isn't it working? So, but everything is 99% on time and it's never got the credit. Just curious about the, the 27,000 technical services that was not recommended. Is that a technical program or something or? Yeah, so it's, really, the only thing, well, there are a couple of things. So there's a $35,000 request for a security audit, cybersecurity audit. It's a, an irregular expense, non-recurring, well, reoccurring with, you know, every few years, maybe. I think the thing, the conversation was that we can probably, see if we can fund it through free cash or some, one time up. And then the other, the other item was $10,000 capital overlay increase. Currently, the capital account does not have a lot of money for replacing 20% of our computers every year, which is my entire five-year replacement cycle. In the conversation I had with the capital committee, they suggested that I just put it in there for annual reoccurring. I do have one coming up to replace all the computers that have public safety next year. So that's a, one of my capital costs.
Well, thanks for coming in. One thing I do want to say is, you know, keep thinking, I know it sounds like the internet providing opportunity kind of fell away, but keep thinking on those charts, you know? Those are the kind of forward thoughts and services that I think our residents will like. And, you know, when you hear that stuff going on, please bring it before the board and let's discuss and see if we can fund it.
Will do, thank you. Do you want to, did you want to see what, did you get any conversation in the budget? The numbers aren't nice.
Andrew kind of touched on it.
I was going to talk some more. I just got.
Yeah, so the, the budget last year was just under $700,000. This year, it's going to be $777,000. A lot of asks, we've been higher. And then also, as Andrew pointed out, the technical services line, we see only other big change.
Yeah, the only net new was 15,000 in transparency software and 8,000 for firefighting software for studies and policy and that stuff. Everything else is.
Stretchable?
Yeah, it's level service, except for those two.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
This budget we're going to discuss is the police budget. How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Very good.
You know the routine?
Thank you. Lucky to start off with accomplishments and then go forward from there. But just starting thanking, you know, all the officers and members of the department that are right here. There are a lot of successes that happened and we kind of whipped the budget. We highlight a lot of, you know, projects and initiatives, but it's really the everyday, just answering calls for service and the things that are happening out there that I think will probably be great accomplishments for the department. So I still want to just focus on that. So I thank them for that and it's been a great, great year in that regard. There were a number of, I think, pretty impressive accomplishments that we did. And I know you won't read these, I'm sure, but from training with FBI data for our supervisors, which just continues to provide high-level training, supervisory level training for them. We continue with our Run Line campaign, which is the ICP mental awareness and training, critical incident response training for the departments. We're making great strides in that. We had three new officers that graduated the academy, all with top honors in various things, which was pretty incredible, like three such officers, both with the academy and all of them wound up in top tier. Which is great. We've had a great, great success with the grants this year. Obviously, we did the home security, court security grant, which was great. But just other things, we get through EOCs with traffic safety and funding for everything from radar equipment to signs, extra enforcement controls that we can do. So that's a continuing initiative. And then some of the other things we implemented, holistic vests for all of the officers to operate those. We've got active shooter kids that are on order and coming through. So that helps from a technical standpoint for the officers. The new tasers, upgrading those and those that hit end of life. I don't remember if we talked about last year, that comes with virtual reality training, which puts us ahead of the curve in terms of what we can do and the training we can offer. That's been a process of kind of being implemented now. And then more, more technology that came off of grants, e-ticketing. So all the cruisers have printers in the car now. So that allows us to know the grant parking tickets, which leads to the other project that we did, butt citations. So increases efficiency, time on the side of the road that the officer is there, they can easily print out documents going on. So we give that to, to motorists. And our ALPR project has gone great, that's been implemented. So it's, we have a lot of successes in terms of projects that we're going to, you know, continue with. In terms of goals, you know, those key things, there's one thing to talk about there, the community impact and kind of community engagement. We've always had officers that have specialized in things, whether it's the SRO or, you know, for resources, marine traffic, really kind of formalizing a little bit the, kind of the unit that they work with for more cross-training so that if a officer isn't there, there's somebody else can pick up the slack and some of those specialized things and really be able to engage the community more on some specialized roles outside of control. We have in our capital budget, replacement for CAT RMS. That would be a huge initiative for us. And that will, you know, detecting the fire on the computer to dispatch side. We've already got a new RMS in place, but that would be a huge initiative. And it's going to give us a lot of technology because what we're using right now is just pretty adequate in terms of just where we are in technology on that. Policies and procedures have been ongoing. We're putting the hardcore press on that, getting that wrapped up. And officer wellness and development, yeah, and the training for the officers, wellness is a huge focus for us in terms of just making sure that the mental health of our officers is in line, just what we're doing with the back end. Risks and challenges. There's probably just one that primarily I'd like to talk about is just staffing. We talked about it last year. We've, we've known kind of the direction that we're going in terms of what reform has changed as far as how we can do training and what that will, the impact that will have as far as summer staffing goes, how we will handle that, you know, what are we going to have to do within the department to make sure we can maintain the same level of service where we don't have as many officers? But also just ongoing in terms of filling full-time positions and what we have a part-time position throughout this year. The pool of applicants that is out there has shrunk dramatically. I was talking to another chief today in a much larger community who normally, when they call for a position, you got 20 or 30 residents to sign, they had two. So in terms of the pool that you're looking at, it's going to be a lot smaller. There are people who are just not necessarily getting into this field. And this is a field that I truly believe is the greatest profession in the world. But there are some challenges right now as far as people wanting to get into it. So we'll have to work on recruiting, but we also note too that the marketplace is incredibly competitive. So before, where we would look at, we're being somewhat intraditionally and sending through the academy and going through that long-range process, which can take a year, year and a half, two years to get somebody in a seat. We're going to be seeing a lot more people who are doing transfers and moving between markets because the marketplace is just getting that much more competitive. So we know that that's going to be focused for. So we know that that's gonna be focused for us, we know that that's gonna have an maximum budget. So, you wanna talk numbers, or you wanna pause for a second?
No, we can pause for a second. Do you, anyone want a little bit more information on the, you know, you've talked about this for a couple of years. Last time, I think it was a pretty big number in terms of the number of hires that, that you wanted to enact. And I think our goal is to probably slowly go down that path. I just look quickly, how many vacancies do we have now?
Right now, we have no vacancies. We're just paying a retirement in January, so we'll have one, which we would then be drawing from our pool of currently only two permanent interim officers. So, you know, on the one hand, it's great that we'll be able to bring someone new into the fold, but on the downside of that is now we're down to only one part-time officer left. We have a couple of other officers that we believe will return in the summer for seasonal. But if you think about where we used to be, where we would have eight, ten, twelve part-time officers in summer, we'll be down to one, two, or three officers. So there's that, there's definitely a seasonal impact in terms of how we put people out on the road and how we can actually focus on the beaches in the harbor business area. But also knowing, too, that there's that budget side of that. So even throughout the course of the year, if we have an overtime shift that we can fill with a part-time person, because a full-time person hasn't taken it, at twenty dollars an hour, you're suddenly now potentially gonna be ordering sergeant onto the shift about three times as much. So, so there's that impact as well. And there's the morale impact, too, for people, you know, don't necessarily want to work on a Friday night when they weren't planning on it, and the impact that has on their family and their personal lives, too.
So has the count increased over the last couple of years by a little bit?
We've gone up over the past couple of years, we're at thirty-seven right now. It's been incremental, I would say probably over the last three to five years. But that, you know, one of the changes that we had was when Kim Stewart retired, her position was civilian position, and we've morphed that over into a sworn position. So our sworn count went up by one, but really within the department, our head count went down the same.
So what is the plan to get, are you and Jim working on?
It's, we've had a lot of conversations about this, and I think, as you said, there would be a gradual approach to how we handle it. You know, I know that all of a sudden, we can't say, hey, we're gonna raise police officers in Situate. The budget will be supported, and also from staffing scheme, again, as I was talking about, how is that recruiting process gonna work? I think one of the concerns that we'll have now is, once we get through the last of these couple of PIs, as a vacancy comes up, we had the luxury before of being able to pull from our part-time pool, plug somebody in there immediately on the road, and then when the next academy comes up, they go out. Now, when we hire somebody, we'll have to pull from a list, wait to get that list in, background, psychological, physical, all of those pieces. And once we get through that and find a candidate that we're happy with, wait for an academy to come up, send them to the academy, send them to field training, and hope when all of that is done, this is really the job that they wanted to do, and they're really the person that we want them to be. So what could be, or what has historically been for us, a really short turnaround with a candidate that we've been very comfortable with, because we've already worked with them over the course of time, we're gonna be putting unfortunately more of an unknown through a much longer process and hope for a possible outcome eighteen months or two years later.
Any questions, Andrew? Karen?
Yes. So policing has become more dangerous, especially in the big cities and the larger communities. I know we probably would err on the side of recruiting young people, but is there any chance that there might be people in some of these bigger cities like Quincy or, and I'm not trying to poach them, but people who might want a little less potential danger in their lives? You know what I'm saying? And I understand that, that salaries are probably significantly more, but when you start to, you know, consider your quality of life, and you might be hoping to retire someday, maybe you get out of, you know what I'm saying?
I think, I think you really hit the nail on the head, though. I think there are two things to pick on quickly, we'd be happy to, happy to poach the people.
What, to help?
Yeah, for your community. I think you see that with seniority, you'll wind up having fellowship assignments, so you might be able to put yourself in a specialty unit or something, particularly a larger department. But I think you hit the nail on the head. When you get into a Quincy, Austin, a Brockton, some of these other much larger communities, there will be a relatively significant salary difference. But that's one of the things in, you know, contract negotiations coming up for the officers right now. We're looking at what the comparables are and where we sit. And, and the officers are already seeing what's happened, just not even, you don't have to go to Quincy. You can go one or two communities over and see the differences in pay that are there. But that's something particularly where we have a much younger pool of officers right now. They're not twenty or twenty-five-year officers, they're much younger officers who don't necessarily have kids in the school system, who have only been here for a couple of years and could say, kind of the converse of what you're saying.
Right, right.
Hey, Quincy's hiring, maybe that's an opportunity for me. I think that unfortunately, too, that's not all the dangers. The dangers in, in a Quincy are gonna be different, certainly maybe they are in Situate in some ways, maybe on a daily basis, but in some ways, you're really only looking at frequency. And I think the, the risk of what you see and what officers see on a daily basis, look no further than the past month of what's happened, and what's happened in March, you know, the risk is always there, regardless of the community and the types of calls that you're gonna be responding to.
I'll just ask one more. So where are we gonna be this summer in terms of beach coverage and, what's the, we gonna have drones up there?
It's gonna be, that's a whole other conversation.
I'm sure it is.
You know, we're, we're fortunate that we do have a couple of people who, who'll work as much as we can.
Yeah.
And we'll have to use some creativity in terms of how we wind up doing staffing. I think last year was a transitional year, this year will be a transitional year again. I'm really happy with the success that we had last year in terms of how we were able to get the staffing out there. And we'll try to do the same thing again this year. But, you know, with each success that we had last year, we'll hopefully be somewhere around the same. We know that at some point, you know, it's gonna be harder and harder to do this. I'm concerned about the level of service that we're providing, because I'm sure you all know, go through the harbor on a Friday or Saturday night in the summer, and it doesn't look even like it did ten years ago with, with the volume of people that are down there. And we know that our beaches are that much busier. So all of those things, it's great for the town in terms of what we're bringing in, but we also need to be able to have the services to be able to support, you know, what happens. And one, one incident occurs, if you only have three people working on a Saturday, that's challenging.
Well, thank you for everyone in the room.
Ken?
I have a couple of quick questions, Chief. So your budget requested seven staff, and I assume that was based on the post requirements?
Yeah, so, so last year, we had asked for eight. And really, it was kind of doing analysis of if we rolled everything back and we had no part-time officers, and we really looked to shift to this kind of community engagement type of model where we want to, throughout the course of the summer, be able to appropriately staff people throughout all of our busy areas, because this is waterfront, on the water. How would we do that? But then also being able to take those same officers then for the remainder of the year and say, okay, well, right now, we can put an additional person in school, we desperately need an additional SRO. We can increase some of what we're doing on the traffic side. And being able to see how these kind of community service officers could be used on a year-round basis. And, you know, one person doesn't necessarily cover you for the period of time you need. A factor of an officer to actually then go instead of weeks a week, pumping out today, you're gonna cover, and that's kind of where those numbers were coming from.
So two follow-up questions to that. So in your requested budget, you had, you know, asked for these folks, but the overtime budget wasn't impacted. I would imagine, and I would just think from a budget standpoint, you had extra officers that number would.
That would, that would be going up. So I think when we did the, the formula, using the formula page, the benefits and everything are calculated through on that for, for each individual, and what the impact would be.
And so the other question is, what's the consequence for not fully staffing to the organization? Is there a consequence from the state? Do we get less funding? Is there a slot on the risk? Do you get some probation? Like, what, I mean, I don't know who knows, because they're all.
The consequence is that the officers you have working, are working more. There's no legal consequence of legal requirement that we have extra police officers that we don't have in the state, backs down. Just the people who are gonna be visiting.
One of the things I think that we had before, and it's kind of shift just generational, too. The old model was always, well, officers like to work sixty, seventy, eighty hours a week. So for time, a lot of people will be fighting for it. I think additional overtime shifts on a Saturday, and there's been a shift, and people enjoy the free time now. I want to be able to spend time with families, and it's, yeah, working eighty hours would be less desirable. So in, in ways, it's not just throwing in the department and consult, it is a deal today, they're so hard and hard to get. So then you get into our, now, for this kind of emergency situation. As soon as you start forcing people, that model comes down, so I'm not gonna break this.
For example, when you see a sheriff's deputy working a detail, no office department, department's taken it, none of our PIs have taken it, none of the surrounding departments, offices have taken it. The sheriff's department is like the last group that gets offered, and you see a lot of sheriff's deputies working the details.
Jim, sorry. Jim, curious, what's the argument not to add, I think, to this officer?
It wasn't funding for it. Now, we might have some funding, surely that we could add an officer. But when I did the budget, there wasn't sufficient funding unless you wanted to, you could take it out of somebody else. To do that, some additional funds, I think, that are gonna be available, that Tony had talked about when I submitted my budget, so that could be one of the places it was gonna go. But to stop hiring officers, we'll cut, we'll cut somebody else, or take them from you.
And we're still, I just want to be clear, so we're still probably expecting, what, a three, four million dollar surplus? When we talk about financial forecasting?
The three, three to five percent should be a free guess, three to five percent.
So it's three to five percent. Get about three, four million. We don't think we have enough money to hire more officers.
Again, now you're, you're trying to fit your revenues to what you want to do, as opposed to setting your revenues to fitting your budget to it. It's a bad way to budget. Say, okay, well, I got all this, but I want to do something, so now I'm gonna stretch my budget to fit that. That's not how I budget, that's not how the town budgets. The town's financial forecast sets out a revenue, and then we fit into that.
Actually, that would be part of the discussions at the end of this, when we say, okay, where's a bucket of money for additions, if we want to?
Yeah, I, I guess I would just, for the rest of the board, I'd like to say that we can't hire one new officer, I don't think we can there. If we think it's important, or if there's some of the position, I just, I, I know that some of this is a priority. And you have a police chief here now two years in a row, they need additional people. If everyone at home is paying more, and the services are not getting better, or the police chief are saying, hey, we need more folks, and morale is down, I definitely want to put this on the agenda later in the year, because I think it's very, very important.
Laura?
Yeah, thanks, Chief, for everything. I do echo Andrew's concern, especially as I go through some of the notes and how thinly covered the schools are as well, just due to the amount of work that the particular officer takes on at the high school, as you noted, Chief. So if I understand, looking at this budget, Jim, where, are we funding just one additional out of the seven, or are we?
We're not funding any at this point.
None.
Right. Given some changes on the financial forecast that we'll be doing in this state aid, we should have sufficient funds to at least hire one, without none of us coming out of state aid. When we talk about school resource officers, that doesn't just come out of our budget, that also comes out of the school money.
Right. Are we looking, do they, is that a topic of conversation with Bill as well, that's?
I know there have been discussions with the schools about that, but I also know that the Department of Education has significantly increased out-of-district placement reimbursements for special ed, and the schools will get about a four-hundred thousand dollar increase in their spec budget for next year, based on those increases. So it's on Bill's radar, I just don't know if it's gonna be something that he's gonna be able to fund. It's probably in the forty-five thousand dollar to fifty thousand dollar range that the schools reimburse for the SRO.
For one, okay, so it'd be up around a hundred for two of them.
But they already have one in the budget.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I think as a group, we should put this, you know, top of the list as we look at our service delivery. I mean, Chief's done such a great job, you know, really building a community force, and I think, you know, everything that we hear in the news, we don't necessarily experience here in Situate. And I'd like to really make sure that that continues and that we're able to support the type of policing that the chief and his team represent and, 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 and lead out there in the community, because I know it's not easy to do, and I think we need to give him the support that he needs, because I don't think he's, he's unreasonable, ever.
So I think you're hearing the board, we're gonna look, see where the budget falls out. You know, we also have to kind of look at, you know, we haven't lost any officers. You know, so we've, we've got the same number of officers providing the same service that we had for the last several years. You know, added maybe one or two over the last six, seven years. So I, you know, we have to do some analysis in terms of other communities, how many officers they have, and the issues that you want to address. I think the summer, the draw, draw of the summer group is really a big impact, and it takes such a long time to get somebody engaged in our system, that's a bit of a.
We kind of transferred out too long ago, too, right?
We did, we, we fortunately got a, we got a ladder transfer who's been fantastic, and that was a huge win for us, because we were able to immediately plug them in. But I, I know Tony will talk about this, we know that the contract's coming up, too, and there's gonna be an impact from that as well. So, you know, all of this in part, too, and some of the things that we look at is knowing that we have to look at the entire big picture, too, as far as the budget.
One of the big changes that the board agreed to on the last contract was the educational incentive, which is all the young officers that we would be leading right now, because they would be in the towns that have the full educational incentive. So that's a lot of those to retain and attract. But as, as the chief said, my big concern is, before you'd ask for a list, and you'd get thirty, thirty-five, forty names on the list. We ask for a list now, five, maybe, ten, if we were really lucky. And then you go through that, and now you're down to maybe one or two good candidates, by the time you're done, it's just, that pool is, is really just disappearing right now. Part of the civil service, and a part of it is just the environment right now.
I think we do have this attraction of the, the community feel, and people want to work here, and that was a thing of the officers that we brought through in. You had just purchased a house here, we wanted to be in the community, this kitchen, going to the schools. We want to continue to foster that, because I think it's such a benefit to the officers who are here, the same ones that are, you know, on soccer field on the weekends, and there's such a huge interaction to that. But there are the other strings that go along, too, whether they're working in Situate, and, and they go along with that, too. So there's a big picture with, with all of this, I hope we move things forward.
Well, we will consider this more, you know, I mean, I think for the whole board, we think you are doing a great job, and your department is, you know, we're not, we're not in the news, which is a great thing, and, and we don't know any of the, all of the little things that every officer observes every single day in terms of the services that provide the community. And it's a, it's a hard job, and, you know, fire in a second, too, but you guys do an outstanding job, a good leadership team, which is, I appreciate that. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Before we dispatch with the chief, he's also gonna present dispatch over by the results. So chief, whoever you want to house into, we'll see that, otherwise, this should be fairly quick with dispatch.
That's Public Safety Communications Department, Chief. What I want to do before we do that, I didn't mention. So just, just to get a sense, so the police budget last year was four-point-four million dollars, and this year, the equivalent amount from town administrators, four-point-seven million dollars. Of that, four-point-one of it is contractual salary. It's a, it's a big department, it's one of our biggest departments in town, and it is, you know, eighty-plus percent of it's the salary for the, for the officers. So now we'll talk about the dispatch.
Dispatch. So comparatively, this one is, uh, this is a smaller package, so this is, this is a little bit easier. And unfortunately, Barbara was unable to be here tonight. They've had, I think, a great year and Chief Murphy would probably echo their good place now in terms of staffing. If they were able to get up the staffing, to continue to look for per diem and be able to fill shifts when there's a dispatcher that's, oh, whether sick or vacation or things, and it doesn't necessarily fall in full time. So staffing, I think, will continue to kind of be a challenge even though we're, we're at full bore. Training is another thing that I think that we've had some conversations with Barbara about just in terms of being able to expand to get more maritime training when we have those type of calls come in. They are required to do sixteen hours of in-service training every year. Nine-one-one pays for that and provides the services to do that. But we have some, some attitude in terms of the type of training. So we'd like to make sure that they get some more specialized training and type of things to be at that Situate. In terms of the budget, relatively straightforward. I think there was a slight increase. They just settled the contract a couple of months ago, month, month ago or so. So the increases that are there, about sixty-four thousand dollars on the salary side. And then a very, about a two hundred dollar increase to just go over and work towards some of the office supplies just operating in dispatch.
So last year's budget was, uh, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. This year, it's going up to seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. It's a staff of nine with two part-time people and one vacant right now. We're looking for another part-time person.
We have another part-time, uh, person in. We'll be looking just for some additional personnel, per diem people.
Okay, so that, that vacancy is there.
Recently, yeah, she just up now and, uh, working solo shifts now herself.
Any questions for the chiefs?
Yeah, one.
Yes.
Are any of these people potential firefighters, police officers? Sometimes I, you know, people start in a particular job and aspire to move up.
Yes, we have, we have one dispatcher, he's a full-time dispatcher who helped us over the summer. He does have the Reserve Academy and just finished the bridge. His ultimate aspirations we'll see, but for right now, he's dispatching and he's helping in the summer. I don't know that there's anybody to, to, to fill for the fire setup.
And how do people find out for diem, part-time, whatever it is?
Uh, we go through Bob Clark, he's been using some of the online tools and posting on the town website and Indeed and kind of casting a wide net. Plus we can go through, uh, Seuss Extranet, which if you are currently a dispatcher, uh, you would be able to see. So that's great because some of the skills already.
That's what I'm thinking.
You know, I mean, one of the challenges is that if you do have those skills, a lot of times you're already working full-time in a truck or something. So you'd rather, you're going to take a shift, go over there, you're going to get an overtime rate shift versus, you know, a second shift there.
Thank you.
Yes, great. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The mic is yours.
Thank you.
Thanks to dispatch, they hold it all together, try to.
Yes, they do. That's really, that's, you know, first responder, they are the first ones that, that really started, so we very appreciate what they do.
Chief, you can transition when in the fire.
Yeah.
Deputy gentleman. How are we doing? This is Department Chief Moore.
Overall, our department's setting is in very good shape. There's sort of, sort of a three-fold, first of all, our personnel. I think, uh, I'd like to commend all of our personnel for providing outstanding service to the town and the community. All of our paramedics and EMTs and firefighters, uh, just pulling out the door, they just do an outstanding job. I hear it from people every day. And, um, the work they can do, and these paramedics are basically nurses on wheels. So the skills they have and what they can do in EMS side is outstanding, especially with the twenty-five minute by the social hospital. So they're saving lives all the time. And I think the people up there, you know, we had a meeting today, we spoke, seeing center and the feedback was, you know, overwhelming there. The appreciation that they have for the firefighters deal with every day. So that and second, second fold is, uh, our apparatus and emergency equipment, I think is as good as it's been and it's going to be that soon. I think due to a lot of it is through capital, to just support capital planning advisory and town meeting, uh, supporting what we need for our apparatus. This, uh, special time meeting, we need to get an ambulance funded. So we haven't got the ambulance being built to go down to like a three-year rotation, used to be a five-year rotation, and they're single crawling in to get trained. And so again, with the, with the, um, the demand we have, the EMS is increasing every day. The launch to the hospital, so these ambulances, uh, they're working all the time. And we have a new command vehicle that's supposed to be done in January. Probably have it through in February, have to get it outfitted with the ambulance sirens and all the equipment done. FY twenty-four, which, uh, a sort of a dive truck, ride back team. Uh, and grants has been a great success for our equipment. And, uh, we just got a forest truck we purchased in July. And the forest truck was much more than a fire service grant. We kind of cashed to help write that grant. And, uh, so that's saved a lot of capital claims, so that actually released, uh, saved taxpayer money. In past year in grants, we've, uh, let's think we purchased in the past year thermal cameras for the firefighters that go inside the fire. It's cameras to identify, uh, you know, uh, somebody that might be lost or, uh, down on the inside of building. We got a drone program going up. We use the drone during that fight, on that rescue, the boat rescue that helped us find, identify, they have the location. And also in a, in a situation like that, um, you know, we can get out there and do a large sweep or a show up here at Tom with Bird's Eye. At least the drone, they're working on the break bars. And, uh, we also, let's think of the boat, we have a flare, a full looking, a red camera. We've got that, um, that bottle GDP with that drone. And that's, uh, night vision on the boat, so we're up there looking for somebody in night. It's a great tool to have. Mobile radio, definitely done, is working on, uh, fifteen radios. We've got a grant for ninety thousand dollars. All the radios that are fixed and trucks are going to be upgraded with radios and communication capabilities. Uh, we've been given a set, a single set of Jaws last year from a Department of Fire Services grant. And right now pending two grants, um, ballistic fire gear. We're looking to, uh, the new model now is for the police, once they get some sort of control, if there was an active shooter program, we're going to get in there and provide EMS charges. They're finding out now that once the EMS gets in, they're only ten percent of the talent. So it reduces that significantly, stopping breathing, we're going to get in there, but we have kind of the equipment and the training to do this. So we only have five sets now, we're looking for thirteen sets a year. So at that point, a lot of full study to get the three teams to go in. So, uh, we continue to train on that. And then the last thing, one of my goals is to, uh, improve the shelter. The high school right now, the shelter is in the cafeteria. You're supposed to have separation when you eat, when you sleep, when you treat people medically, we've got cats, we don't have that. Actually, this past two years when we had COVID, during the restrictions of two hours, we could only house forty-four people there. So if we had a major storm, we have to escape. So the, uh, the junior high had a shelter coordinator conduct a mistake and watched the junior high. So that was one of the best stuff you saw. And it was just, you know, we have, you have a big atrium cafe area. You have, uh, a great kitchen there, you have a gym for today's stuff, and you have three doctor rooms there. Sleeping pools, there's also an area for pets, there's a bathroom, and a small, uh, yoga room that you do for EMS triage. So I know sometimes, you know, you get a bad storm, you might not be able to get to the hospital for two, you know, a couple, three days, trees, snow, stuff like that. So, more than we're wrong, we're trying to clear for that. I just, uh, submitted a grant yesterday, Jim signed off on a, on a paper work to get a, a grant for supplemental generator in junior high. Because unfortunately, the junior high is great, it's a great setup, but the heat only goes to sixty degrees in the winter time. Just to keep things from, current generators don't have anything on it. The, uh, the, half the equipment in the kitchen doesn't work mainly because when the, when the fan's on, all the generators, you can't use any gas, can't cook. So there's restrictions there, so there's grant opportunities right now in H and T G with the state and FEMA. We submitted quite an extensive grant, we submitted that, uh, yesterday. Hopefully find out in February, March, we get that, but that, if we do get that, that's going to improve our, our shelter's capability immensely. So triple our capacity and just have the separation of this whole stuff. So it's, uh, it's an important, uh, part of our emergency management. And, and we want to make sure that we shelter our own personnel, our, our people in town, they have a place to go to. We have some leave of coastline, we have to have a place where they go. So this is going to improve that, and I'd say we're optimistic on that grant as well. And the third part of our, uh, success, I think, you know, we have, I think we have investment facilities in the South Shore. Do we got to do the support, capital, just, uh, we have committees in town meeting, you know, the station pool. We just had the one year anniversary this past week, so a little bit for a year, it's worked out great. The station looks great, we had the, um, all the landscape we put in this fall and it's really coming, it looks nice. So, um, the whole building has, has worked out well, the guys like down there, uh, the people in El Rock, the people. Station down there, that's, that's worked out well. Get the public safety, where it's year six right now and it's worked out with everything we actually wanted to do, you know, as far as second ambulance capabilities, response time capabilities, and, uh, and living quarters for the, for the firefighters. It's really worked out well, while the technology increases. So those are the good things. The challenges we have right now is, is similar, if not worse than the police as far as, as far as, uh, we have six agencies right now. We typically have three, maybe four. We just had two retirees recently, born thirty-two years in September. Mike Green last week at thirty-three years retired. And, uh, we've always been very aggressive in hiring, we did hire five this past year, but we lost a couple. Three out of the last five firefighters that have left, three of them actually just got out of my service. Totally. And, uh, we, we've lost a couple to other departments. We've always been pretty successful and, 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 you know, money is always a complaint, you know. But we're actually, we're in the mix of it, you know, uh, we are a little below on the, on the base, but there's opportunities with overtime to make up that money. I think we provide a great service here, we have a great reputation. Then the facility and the equipment are great, so I think there's an attract, but everybody's got the same problem. I think across the board, most of the towns, especially the ones that have high paramedics, they have your own ambulances down about ten percent. So we're not alone in this, and actually it's fire service across the country. So I think the police have the same issues, you know, and, uh, you know, we're trying to, uh, we had those posters made up by once a year. We're trying to do some education, but we have met with the VOTAC before COVID. And they're going to, uh, to work on starting, it's back on track now, we're going to start a fire EMS program there. And that's going to be, you know, hopefully by the time they get out of the VOTAC, they have the EMT certification, they have a basis in fire science and they move on. You get the paramedic or the fire science degree, uh, at a local college somewhere. And, uh, so that's back on track, we meet next Friday up there, the school's pulling, pulling, uh, cooperating with us on that. So with that, and also I think, I think the fire service and even police and teaching, we're going to do a better job of marketing. You know, I think we have to stop marketing and letting people know we really need them and this isn't making you do it. So we're trying to do that, uh, you know, at, at least in, in the local area, but also hopefully statewide and countrywide to do that. It's, you know, we do, uh, we only have paramedics and the skills are far beyond the EMT. And, you know, to, to try to get those, it just, COVID did a little curveball for us doing that because a lot of people were halfway through their classes and it stopped. And not everybody went back to it. Right now we're seeing sort of that gap right now where there's not a lot of paramedics out there. And, um, the next list, firefighter list comes out in March, so I tried to hone in the list, it's not till March when the list is out. So, you know, we do have two in the academy, one actually is, uh, had a medical issue, uh, she'll be going back probably in a month or two. But, um, we have one academy now that's doing very well, so we'll have two more to four coming out probably sometime over the winter. So, but we continue to try to hire and attract people here and that's the challenge. But, uh, overall, we're in a lot of good shape, like I said, with the police, the equipment and the personnel. And, um, we have good people and I think, uh, I think we should drive those things.
Great. Thank you, Chief. I, um, talked to someone on Zach's presentation today, this senior center, they said you did a fabulous job and just everybody raised about the service that we provide, that you guys provide to all of our.
Yeah, so you know, with us and pack people, you're in their homes and, you know, sometimes it works bad. And I think, uh, you know, they do appreciate it and, you know, we, we, the deputy and I, you expect excellence every time you go out the door. That, you know, we might have price here and there in the station, when you go out the door, you're like, you're like your mother, so.
You do, you do what you can, Mark, you've done a great job to enforce the rules since last season also. And it's a little, like you said, it's not putting out fires as much as, as it is saving lives.
Sometimes it's just bedside manner, just step out and make sure they feel comfortable, sit on the couch, so it just, uh, went to you. See, and then you notice the skills they have with vacations, we have to use it, everything else, the cardiac monitors are going, but we have, again, the light nursing wheel, so very fortunate to have.
Uh, questions, Karen?
I just want to go back quickly to the, the concept of gates as the primary shelter. Which, yeah, the facility is great and I, I completely laid it out perfectly why that worked so well. But I, I recall that when we were doing the senior center, one of the reasons we were excited about that as the primary was in the event that we needed to shelter people, that if the roads were good enough, we don't open the schools. Like that was, we wanted to get them out of the high school so that it didn't shelter facilities, didn't up against educational opportunities. So can you just speak a little to why it would be advantageous to shift from the senior center, which has all of those elements that I think you've mentioned?
It does have all those elements on a small scale. So if we had to get a hundred and fifty, two hundred people, the senior center's not going to hold that. But we did set the senior center, Robert Riggs, on January against the shadows and patterns requirements that Red Cross recommends. But, and, and part of that plan is, hey, listen, if we go to the high school or the junior high, we have a large, a large venue of people. And now we're getting ready, listen, we have two, three dozen people that we want to get schools open. We'll shift over to the senior center. Or if it's only a small group to start with, we'll shift over to the senior center so we don't impact schools. So senior center is also used for cooling stations and warming stations, you know, uh, that's our main cooling area. So like we need a large scale and a big two thousand eighteen school. That's actually sort of, sort of the plan B, but it's worked out well.
And the application, you said, is a FEMA grant application?
Correct, yeah, assuming that I have to figure this out.
Generally, there's a rule of thumb, forty-eight to seventy-two hours, you're on your own. So we need to house them, people feed them, people. After that point, the state will start opening regional shelters. And depending on the weather, we try to transition people to regional shelters. As the chief said, we get out of that certain point, we say, okay, this is too big, you know, old chance. We transfer people up there, but we need a shelter that can handle, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred people for a couple of days.
Yeah, and you get those, how long, just five days and it's, it's, it's middle of winter. It's challenging, you know, for everybody, so, I mean, that's, that's, that's usually when we have that demand, that large demand, so.
We would, the good thing would be, once the library generator goes in, pretty much all our public facilities, town hall, council nation, library, will all be able to be open in power situations. So people might not necessarily develop shelter, they know the library won't get cool, power all that women, then, then they'll home, so. Those are all, it takes a number of burden, but you do need that one place where if that storm is coming, we can put people until other things open up.
I think you've actually had a very good response in our coastal community that, uh, that we built a trust that they're, they're going to leave when we say they're going to leave. We only do it when we really need to do it. And, uh, you know, a lot of them do go to hotels and we put those numbers and, and all that information out, uh, before, before the hospital count. But there's definitely people that just can't afford to go to a hotel and, or if they wait to the last minute, there's no hotels available. We just have to provide a facility, but the facility setup over there was fantastic, so if we get that grant, it's going to help us.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, well, actually, to piggyback on what Karen was just talking about, if, in fact, we're building a new elementary school, I hope that, you know, some thought would be given to a similar situation. Did it just turn out that the gates turned out to be useful or would you have input when it was, I'm sure the fire, police must have input.
I did encourage that, but obviously, you know, there's a little budget there. I think that came under budget, but it's unfortunate that we used to get everything on there. Sometimes you don't find the stuff up until after. You know, everything's on there and you find out, well, it's not, it's on here, it's on here, it's only going to sixty degrees. It's not going to be warm enough to house people. So I think that's something, like I say, when you build a new building, we're going to make sure, we did that in general, make sure that happened with the senior center. And, uh, so I think going forward, they have all these buildings fully capable. But you don't know, if you get a hurricane, you don't know what that's going to, how that's going to impact us, you know, so. You know, hopefully not, but, uh, it's, it's getting more frequent storms and we got enough more resources that will test it fairly frequently. We had four declared storms in seven years, two thousand twelve, two thousand eighteen. We're still working on funding to get that back, and that's another nightmare, so.
Well, I have to say, when I was at the senior center during one storm, I can forget what it was, but most people seemed to be there, so they charged their phones up.
Yeah, that's a lot, like you said.
No, like when they get warm, they have some hot soup, some hot coffee.
Yeah, plug the phone in.
Plug the phone in and then.
And then they.
All the, all the, all the blankets on.
You do what you got to do, but, yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
There was no power anymore. Yeah, yeah. Or, or wait, I think two thirds, two thirds of the town.
That's right, but there was a generator, senior center was stuck.
I think the March eighteen storm was the biggest shelter that sits up in here. We had probably about fifty, seventy-five people.
Yeah, we had about a hundred and fifty, but in two thousand and ten, when the seawall breached, we had those fires that set in there. We didn't anticipate those. Some bad storms, it was a nice Christmas, but we had fifty-five foot breach and it was just, Stan Hills was, was deep with the belt, man. And, uh, a lot of people caught off guard. And, uh, we had a lot of people in the shelter, that was one of our first shelter programs, and we just wanted to get them in here. It's probably about a hundred and fifty people, so it can happen. But, uh, you know, the people do get out. It can happen, but uh, you know, the people do get out early, they do get to the hotels, a lot of them, so. But there's definitely a need for the shelter, so I think it's it's just a great setup. And I hope we're successful in this uh, this grant, cause it's just a better model all around, and we have the capability for really to do it.
Better to have more than not, you know.
Yeah, you know, if you get that fixed, only might need three hundred people in that that can go. So. That's one of my goals, and we're on our way, I hope we can get the grant, so keep you informed.
Mara?
Hi, Chiefs. Um, first of all, thank you for everything. Again, another, you know, great service that you all provide to our town, you know, as Tony said, I think, you know, we receive nothing but compliments on everything that your staff does, so thank you. Um, I do have a question. Um, the CERT team that you're reorganizing, has that just gone defunctant right now, or is there a skeleton crew in place? Can you just elaborate a little bit on the situation there?
Sure, Lieutenant Dave Bonalotto has um, taken that over, he got certified in 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 being a CERT trainer. He's one about paramedics, he's actually uh, does a lot of EMS instructing too. He's got about six or seven right now that are really, you know, showing interest, um, one works emergency management. We're trying to, you know, trying to encourage like former police, fire, military to help out, we actually had a, he when I spoke today at the senior center, we actually had him speak a little bit, try to attract more, so that's back on track. Our goal is to get about a dozen, fifteen right now, about halfway there. Um, and we're still looking for more personnel, but like I said, we'd like to get some retired nurses as well. And this is mainly for the shelter operations. Um, you know, when when we have different shifts, good in four or five days, we need people to help out in 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 long term, so. Um, it was a little bit, and what happened with, I think a lot of times you have volunteers and they're and they're older, and when you see you're gonna get out before the snow, I can't get out, so. You know, and we've we would appreciate their their enthusiasm, but we're trying to get some people that, listen, we need you and we need you in these storms, that's just, you know, if you're gonna come here, we need you during, you know, trying times and challenging environments to get to here, so. But uh, we are back on track, Mara, and uh, we're going the right direction again with that.
That's great. How how are you putting the the news out there, the requests that, you know, you have another ten or so positions that you'd like to fill? Do you need, you know, do we have that on the website anywhere? Is it common knowledge?
Yeah, we have a website, Chief, Lieutenant Bonalotto's, we have social media. Uh, like I said, but we brought them up today, it was, we had probably about seventy-eight seniors here today. And uh, you know, we put the word out to them. And you know, I asked them to go to the hospitals and ask some nurses that, you know, maybe still working for me and that can down. So we'd love to have some more EMS, that's that's really the biggest need, so. We are getting the word out there and uh, we are coordinating with other towns around us, uh, with their uh, CERT teams as well.
They don't have to be necessarily medically um, educated though, right?
No, no, it's.
So I I I would recommend also just reaching out to all the PTOs, I mean, I'm just finding a lot of the younger parents are just so engaged and highly engaged, and if you reach out to them as well, you'll you'll tap into a whole other world out there.
Great idea, thank you.
Anything, any questions?
No, no questions, those are great ideas, Mara, I just want, thank you. It's been doing as you say, as all of you have said, I mean, time for a hot time, try residents, or thank you.
You know, it's maybe great, you could keep running and running, like we just talked the other day, and we're following that our host run we've had, and without even a big storm, typically a big storm, you had a couple hundred runs. But uh, you know, we uh, this year, we're thirty-five, thirty-six, we're running, you know. You know, thirty percent of the time, we'll do simultaneous runs, so the secondhand is working together, it's just been fantastic, so. It really gives the best service to the town, so we'd like a mutual aid.
Tony, I have one additional question.
Yeah.
Um, are you only allowed to take people in the ambulance to an emergency room? Or is there any possibility of being able to take people to urgent care? Because they're popping up all over the place, and the the wait times there are negligible compared to the uh, the hospitals and um, some, I was wondering, it's probably some legislation that needs to be passed, but.
Well, we we talked about that when we built all the triage drones, when we talked about that, Karen, the public safety complex. And there's there's been talk in the insurance companies that they're not gonna allow all these people going to social hospital. They're paying up to avoid some people may not get there in the future. That's why we did our triage drones, we anticipated when we built Tom Rock, the public safety complex, we're analyzing them all. So somebody might have a screen that's gonna have a doctor on the other side and say, alright, go to urgent care, go to the hospital, treat here, go home, you know, we'll have a visiting nurse coming out, so. We are prepared for the future of those changes, it's it's slower than anticipated, but uh, you know, if somebody wants to go to urgent care and that's the right place to go, you know, we sometimes just get people ride home.
You can do that today?
If they request to go, then we'll go there. Typically, you know, our 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 hospital is our parent oversight here, so, you know, we have to get their their permission, medical control, and say, listen, you know, but a lot of these doctors own these places, so social hospitals, so I think that's something that's gonna happen in the future, doesn't really happen a lot now. But if somebody, you know, wants to go to Boston, we don't take a patient to South Shore that's gonna get into going to South Shore and transfer to Boston, or can't take a patient, their doctor's in town, you know, it's it's a request, and usually, a lot of times, if there's any question, we'll get medical control there, but we'll take them to Boston too, it's absolutely necessary.
It would be disgusting, huh?
Right.
On the flip side, you've got people that that will go to the urgent care and then realize that they're they're too sick to be there and they're towns like the old Pembroke, they're on state, you can take somebody's, they don't have the ability to treat, and then they need transferred from the urgent care to the hospital, so.
They take Boston, they get the back of the ambulance. I'm not going to urgent care, go in the back of the ambulance.
Yeah.
I went to urgent care, and was like, I'm not going to South Shore Hospital.
Good, but I my point is, I'm not, I was.
I I know what I know what my problem was, and I knew I was sitting South Shore Hospital for like twenty hours.
But you're not gonna call the ambulance at that point.
Well, I was in the ambulance, I said, I'm going to.
Really, you didn't think they were gonna care?
I didn't think they could.
Like I said, we, if somebody wants to go, then we have to get medical control, but if they needed a ride, I mean, we'll we'll do whatever it takes for us, so. But typically, we have to call the hospital, and they may say, what's going on? It hasn't come across yet, but you know, most people go to urgent care, go in their own, is it not that sick to get an ambulance?
Well, I just assumed that you couldn't need urgent care.
Generally, if you need an ambulance, you'd probably need to go to the hospital. Urgent care is really a a place.
Unless you're a patient who decides where he or she want. I mean, if if you've had enough experience with emergency rooms, you know, it, first of all, it's better to go through an ambulance because they'll probably take you faster, but you can sit in an emergency room for hours and hours and hours and hours.
They're 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 in the same position police and fires and staffing, it's the same, city is the same as South Shore.
The only difference is just sitting inside, instead of the waiting room. You track the ambulance, just they, I mean, there's people in the hallway.
Not not now, there there are patients that are that are not serious enough, go from stretch to the waiting. And just because they're just not fed the bill.
I think of the urgent care, you can get quicker service, a few minutes stitches or something like that, urgent care, you know, is a great option, it's quicker, it's it's usually like a thirty-five dollar, about when you're in and out of there in thirty-five minutes, but you can go to the hospital. Like I say, you'd be waiting three hours before you're, you know, you get to see a doctor, so, especially when they get jammed up.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Great. Great. Um, just quickly, the numbers, uh, last year's budget was five point five million dollars. This year's budget is five point eight million dollars. I believe this is our second largest departmental budget other than the schools.
Yes, so uh, it is, Tony, and yeah, we talked about, I think we took back a little bit, about a million sixty-five thousand last year from the annual revenue, so we're we're down close to probably four million net, but the uh, the the with Jim's help and Bob Clark's help and Nancy's help, we got a contractor to fight fighters last year. Right at the back of twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's all the staff increases here, that three hundred and seven thousand is all contractual, okay? And you look at the eight, two thousand dollars for education, um, it's threefold, there's more, it's more, it's more attractive now, there's more money that got raised for their for education, there's more firefighters that have degrees now going out, including some of the, some of the courses to get, to get uh, fire science courses to to qualify for that. And also, that funding, they were given a stipend, they ain't no stipend, all the EMTs are paramedics, that that stipend comes out of that budget. And the basics, the other, the other two for overtime and and uh, interest salaries are all contractual. The only thing I requested was what a thousand dollars will be invested last, cause I've gone over a couple years in a row. And that's with the help of uh, cares at Acquiescence, so right now, that's all about twenty million of them, but other than that, this is all contractual.
Right. So of the, you know, eleven thousand dollar increase, three hundred and seven is all salaries. And similar to the police department, you can acquire, you know, eighty-five, ninety percent of this.
Ninety-five percent?
Is paid.
Yeah. That was an overtime, that's ninety-five percent of the budget, so. Um, you know, I guess we're fortunate that uh, we pursue every grant that comes across our desk, and we've been very successful at that, and I think the equipment, uh, yeah, perhaps was supporting the town in capital too, is is um, is is great, so I very appreciate it.
So the only other note that I wanna make, I see four vacant positions in the budget, didn't you say there's six?
We just had two retire.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
So, you're on the path of.
So we're trying to hire, I guess I tried to pull up the list and they said, listen, no, no, civil service, there's nothing right now until probably March. Till this comes out, so. Um, you know, we've always been very successful, the last, we've been hiring, hiring, and getting aggressive, and uh, you know, unfortunately, we did lose a couple this year, uh, two other departments, and uh, you know, we had one passing cancer, we had two retirements, and then another one that's just about the fire service, so.
What's the total?
Forty-two. Forty, and we have uh, we have forty-eight, there's forty-five minus four, we sent us a four cap, that was, I saw it, that was really good, and it had, it's fifty-one total in the pot, and forty-eight before.
And that's about level for the last year?
Yeah, that's been the, that's been the staffing for for decades, yeah. So uh, you know, we are getting busy, but you know, we we have, with the two ambulances running now, uh, you know, we wanna keep the paramedics coming in, you know, you go to EMT, and then, you know, you might move the paramedics, it's just saying, oh, the young guys aren't gonna be able to sign, you know, so. It's just uh, it's 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 never been fully staffed, I think, you know, once we're getting close. We're typically two to four down at all times, just cause, you know, you know, cause sometimes people come here. I had a guy that, you know, I bought a house in here in Pembroke, and they have better insurance, and I'm going in, it is what it is.
We refer all the same challenges to, but for young fire, that is.
But we don't have residency, right?
Fifty miles. Fifteen miles? Yeah, which is, which is fair, used to be ten.
As a crow flies, I hope.
From your, to one to the border.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you happen to live down near Hull High School, you work in Boston, you're actually about a half mile from the Boston border, cause the Boston line is the channel between Pettix Island and Hull, so. It's as a crow flies, but it could take you still a long time. The usual we have is, as the chief says, if you're a paramedic, and you're interviewing a constituent, you're interviewing for five or six or seven other departments as well as such. And you just, you have your pick.
Demand is a little bit higher, and like I said, COVID and some of that setbacks, you know, there's not as many people out there. Hopefully, we can do a better job of marketing, and say the VOTAC, hopefully run it up, so that's gonna take some time, so. We're just gonna keep trying, you know, hire the best we can, like I said, the facilities we have and the equipment we have, it's a big attraction. You know, sometimes money, but you know, we're, 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 so just, you know, we run a good program. Yeah, just right now, we've had a few retirements, a few left, and somebody's been sick, so it's uh, the good news is we don't have any big other long-term sick right now. One just came back, and buddy, you're gonna have, I mean, see, so uh, we have a couple of little discounts for a couple of weeks right now, but you know, we're in pretty good shape, we're thinking of this right now.
Thank you for the great job, Yolanda.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, honey. Thanks, Mara.
Thank you.
The uh, next budget we're doing is veterans, five forty-three. Uh, how are you?
Good. How's it going?
Good, thanks for waiting. You wanna uh, tell us some of your accomplishments or your challenges, um, which you look in the future, and then we'll go over them.
Uh, so accomplishments, obviously, uh, do when uh, it's busy up there, but you don't wanna um, uh, fully develop claims and benefits for the the veterans, uh. Since I'm moving up into the senior center, it's just been more uh, it's productive, uh, people are, because of the age, people are up there, so they're coming up and seeing me, making appointments, they're coming and sitting down, and I get to uh, actually see a lot more than I did when I was here, so that aspect of it is great, I see that going forward, uh, it's gonna be a big plus. Um, the, on the other side, I'm very busy with those, um, they're more entailed. Um, there has been uh, I saw a lot of delays in the VA side of it, that pulled up some of these claims. They're fighting through that now to hire, um, a lot of um, people have stepped up, wrote a lot of letters, and they're really pushing to get these seats filled and get this eyeball machine running again and get these things through quicker than they have, and um, some won't take over two years from COVID, and uh, but they're they're speeding those numbers up now, that I've seen. Uh, the more difficult cases um, are taking longer, um, they're getting frustrating, um, cause I'm on the front line with the families. So that's a big challenge now, um. The plus side of that, though, is uh, with our other program, um, it keeps them off the the chapter one fifteen state program because I am getting these claims through, they're they're getting their benefits, and they don't need the help of the chapter one fifteen, so that's that's great news, um, that's what you really wanna do anyways, and I think with chapter one fifteen is always to help them along and get them off that, to get it supported, and uh, so by doing the other federal program, that really balances that out, so. And I've seen that in the numbers. At at first, I was, you know, I was like, wow, what's going on here, but then when I started seeing the numbers that are gonna reduce, and on the other side, I had a sample uh, concept of how it's supposed to work. So that's all great, um.
How many active claims do you have now?
Active claims that haven't been approved, you mean, through the VA? Um, on the federal side, I know there's two very frustrating cases of um, eight to tens. I had one of those eighty-four pages I put in, the other one's up to seventy-four, and they're still asking for more. I've never seen that when I live in EMT with them, those usually are, um, I think when I was getting those approved, they were probably maybe fifteen, twenty pages. I I don't understand that, and I've asked them, when I was up in training, I asked them again to, um, they they really didn't give a clear answer on that, which was really frustrating, um.
Not pending, but how many, cause I remember five years ago, we had fifteen.
Oh, you're talking on the state side now? You're talking, okay, so the state side's chapter one fifteen, right, that's um, so.
The people that you're helping get services too.
Yeah, so the ones that are under the the federal poverty line, the two hundred percent, we went down, so we lost, we're down to seven now. And unfortunately, and what they're gonna do right now, they're gonna hold back, so they're about to get a big, um, probably what, eight point, eight point something, nine percent on their social security. So we were told, we're about to do certification in January, and again, that concerned me because when we went through COVID, they gave all stimulus checks. They weren't ahead of that with the numbers, the math. So I lost two clients right away off that, because they were over assets. So we were fighting up there again for them to raise that, and that's in the works now, to raise that two hundred percent. We'd like to see five hundred there, but if we get through fifty, that helps them along the way to keep these people on. So what they're gonna do is they're not gonna take, we do this re-certification right now in January, they're not gonna take that income, if you're on now, they're not gonna take that income and gonna use last year's income. That will keep those ones on there, cause I was, they're they're borderline, I mean, I tried to do a couple of things to keep them, really keep them on there, but uh, um, everything's moving up and the economy too, um, they're getting help, you know, so. They're not, they don't spend their money. Um, I always tell them, well, what they done, take their rankings out, they done, do something, but keep that, just keep the assets down, so you stay on these programs, cause you know, you need, you know. And those are mostly the widows.
So how many, I know we're helping with a set of people. How many, how many people are we?
Oh, the, on the federal side, oh, I I can tell you, I looked on my data, uh, the data spec that I just got before I went up there, so I'll say, we'll just say I had it for a year and a half. I'm well over a hundred people on there with claims that I've gotten through. My drawers before I went up there, I'm on my second drawer, so I'm well up a couple hundred, couple hundred. So I'd stay all together probably since a minute, instead of moving these claims, I'm probably well over four hundred, yeah.
Cause when you got in there, there was ten or something, something, so, yeah.
On the federal side, it's not that tough, yeah. So um, yeah, so that, and those would be the challenges too, just um, again, uh, the economy, um, a lot of um, it's tough, it's tough too with the mental health side of it too, um. It's more cases coming on that, um, it's trying to get these people, the veterans that are in need to the right resources. Um, again, people don't understand that I I don't, I'm not that expert, I'm not gonna be, you know, treating, I'm gonna get to those resources. Um, so I'll get those. I'm going to get to those resources. Um, so I'll get those calls over the weekend on, you know, some serious cases. And I have to act real quick on my sleep. And, um, and get them, you know, into the right, right spot, the right people. So those who know I was going to be there, and I see that going forward. It's just going to be getting a lot more, um, more cases like that. And then on the other side too, is just again, we know that, um, our parents live a lot longer. The kids are, have to, you know, step in and help out. And, um, that's where those benefits come in and they're, you know, trying to work them through all that paperwork and get their benefits is being challenged.
What else?
I would think, uh, just on my budget with the numbers, the only thing, the only thing I had to increase, and it was again, because of the economy, was the flags that we buy. Prices went up largely, um, for the materials and shipping and all that. The, the, the one thing on that though, again, that gets reimbursed basket at times seventy five percent. So, uh, that, that got increased. That's the one increase you see there. And then also on the red, white and blue, um, more recently too, that, that went up big time. I got caught kind of on that one, but I did have some extras downstairs. The last year we got through it. So that's one of the things that, um, we had increased too. And then the other, the only other things were the personnel salaries, just the step increases. But other than that, um, everything else we kept level. And I like the numbers. I, I don't think it's going to be a problem for next year on budget for the numbers.
Questions for y'all? Laura, I think, no, you go.
I do just on the, uh, the discrepancy for the support.
So, yeah, five thousand, we looked at five. Is that what you're looking at? Yeah. So over the last eleven years, it's always, that's always been that line that's been hard to get a real grasp on. Because we don't know, can't, we're into the crystal ball. But over the last eleven years, again, to the numbers that we were just talking about, I feel very confident that we can move it into that level.
To the one hundred.
Yeah, well, yeah. I think that's, you know, after eleven years of watching this, it seems like that's, it's been working all fine.
And that's reimbursed at seventy five percent.
Absolutely. Yep.
Right, John, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Again, budget, total budget is, um, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars last year. This year's, uh, two hundred and one thousand dollars. And that's mostly with Andrew drop up where we dropped that by fifteen thousand dollars. Excellent. Thank you. The next department we're going to talk about is youth aid.
Yes.
Six fifty.
Hello, good evening, good evening.
How are you?
Good, good.
Your budget is the most value-driven budget we have. So tell us, although I know we're aware of a lot of the stuff you're doing, but tell us about what you want to do above and beyond next year and.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, a lot of the, we've had a very successful year this year. We've, uh, expanded a number of the adopt-a-lots, we added new adopt-a-lots. Um, we did some special projects, one in particular that has been very successful is to put a retaining wall around the flagpole as the, uh, the golf course that stops the sand, you know, this is sand due behind. Uh, the, the little restaurant, the, the golf club house and the sand will come down and just get into the, um, the parking lot. So now that has become a very beautiful little area. And we hope to be able to, uh, find an adopt-a-law called here to go and make that area into an adopt-a-law. We, uh, and anyway, I think I put some photographs of things of that. But, um, we have right now, um, a commission that has younger people rather than, you know, old ladies like me. And, uh, the, the reason that we think it's really important to keep on attracting younger people is because they have great ideas, great energy and will also be able to, um, attract more interested people in perhaps taking on the adopt-a-lots. Um, we have had, um, a lot more visibility in the town because of the different projects that we're doing. And, uh, we have moved from, um, just a landscape that looks lovely in the summer to what now has become really a four-season landscape. So we have been doing holiday decorations. We just put up a tree, uh, in the harbor and have already gotten comments about how lovely it is. We, uh, expanded some of the, um, decorations here in Fort Teton Hall. Um, also we had a gift from the, um, twenty twenty, um, Cituate High School reunion fund. Uh, the twentieth, uh, um, anniversary. That was delayed by two years due to COVID and that tree has been planted and is now also lit up and decorated. We did get, uh, approval from both the historical commission and, uh, the town, uh, and, and, um, the DPW. So, um, things that we are looking for for next year is to support what is happening in North Cituate, which is a trade canopy. Um, we have looked at that area and we feel that, um, the, uh, the, the North Cituate group would love to get plantings or, uh, cogs of its flowers. And, uh, we are very happy to assist them with that. Um, there's been concern, uh, about the golf course entrance, that that does look very badly. I don't know if we can do that. Um, another thing is that, um, we were able to put an adopt-a-law into the library area, which was a new lot. It was an old lot, but it had, uh, been plowed over or whatever, but it was like the new library was built. So the, um, so we have a new adopt-a-law there that looks really lovely. And there's still continued to be a lot of comments about the library swelled by, aren't we doing anything about that? So we do want to look at that and it may be possible to even look at something that would be like climbing area with big rocks, kind of like an amphitheater. There's some ideas around that. Um, we are very interested in the green bush area also, since that is being developed to see what we can do there. One of the requests that we had is if we could plant a tree over at the rotary where the water department is. So that that would be a tree, um, that could be there permanently rather than putting a, um, a cut tree there during the holidays and, and, and aligned. And this was a request from, uh, a member of the historical commission. We, uh, also are, um, very interested in, um, and looking forward to, um, the convening of all of the groups in town that the Economic Development Commission is planning to do next week. And, uh, we have been talking with them about that also since last year. So we're very aligned and very interested in finding out, um, what part we can play as, uh, with all the people, uh, in town. Um, so these are just things that we're thinking about that are, um, possible projects for next year, depending on how much money we have, uh, available. Um, the other thing is that we're very interested in the grist mill and just this pushing area, you know, where the, the, over at the rotary also, um, that's a lovely area that could use some tender loving care. Uh, another thing that, uh, we have been interested in is the beautiful veterans plaque that is very neglected. It's on the Edward Foster Road, the bridge that goes over. That's a magnificent plaque. It's absolutely gorgeous. And, uh, done by a very notable, um, sculptor from Cituate back in, you know, when it was done, I guess in the twenties. And it's really a beautiful, beautiful piece. So anyway, we are happy to, um, to support, um, areas that, uh, we are made aware of as well as areas that we are seeing that we feel could really, um, you know, use some spous- spousing up. So North Cituate is one of the main ones right now. And, um, you're also keeping an eye on, um, you know, like the Duncan Douglas Trail, people call it the David O'Grady Trail. Uh, another thing that we are very interested in is walkability, even though it's outside of our, um, purview, if that's the word. But, um, we're very interested in that because that the whole area going, uh, going down, towards, you know, from the new development going towards the rotary. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic right now, but once people start walking now, uh, past the new, um, uh, gas station that is there and then, um, the coffee shop, they end up at Duncan Douglas. And if they want to go get their nails done, they have to go and walk right in the street. So that's another thing that, you know, we'd love to, to see if we can address. I, I mean, it's not really, but we would like to make people aware of, that it's quite dangerous to do that. Living right there, I have to say, I find it quite dangerous to have to move into the street with all the government traffic for just a little bit. And it's going to get worse with all of the, um, new apartments that are there. But we're very interested in, in, in the whole area there, um, including the parking lots. Because, uh, it is, uh, an area that has, um, non-permeable, uh, parking lot, uh, a lot of black tar, uh, which is not only here, but, and so it's very hot. The trees are hot and it's just, you know, a lot of runoff. And so, uh, even those permeable parking lots that are white are again outside of our scope, so I think that.
Well, you've got a huge list there and.
Well, it, it, but, 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 you know, it may not happen, but deep, but we have, this, this commission has been incredibly creative about, uh, their ideas. That's.
So we love the, or I do, and I'm sure this board does loves the, just the forward thinking and looking at other areas to do and not just maintaining, you know, the same seven plots or ten plots that we've had in store. So that's, that's all great. Your budget is thirty two thousand five hundred, up twenty five hundred from the prior years. And, um, you know, it sounds like.
Oh, we're looking forward to spending it.
Any quick questions?
An observation. I would like to thank you because I think that the landscaping job that you've done in the front of town hall created an impetus for the town administrator to get the front of the town hall painted. But so I'm just saying, you set the ground and it, and now it looks very nice there. And it used to look very shabby.
But now we are working on getting all of the notices off the doors.
Now you're messing with the education.
Well, no, no, because we have money for, uh, the right kind of, um,
Enclosure.
Uh, enclosure in the front. And, uh, I know DPW and, um, our, um, election officials are looking at that so that, because they're very bothered by having all the windows kind of plugged up with notices. And so they would like that too. And, uh, we have told them that we would have the money to help them do that because it would beautify the whole entrance. So we feel it would be part of what our mission is. Makes it to look beautiful.
Yeah.
So we're just waiting, we're just waiting, uh, you know, for, for Kevin to give us the exact information as to how much money he needs.
Great.
And I have to say, our town administrator has been very patient, listening to all our whining and complaining.
We're just, we're just saving it up. I'll get the camera for you.
Including, including the bated.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in and you guys do an outstanding job.
Well, thank you.
And, uh, you know, we thank you and you make our, our town prettier. So we're appreciative of that.
We're trying and, you know, we're trying to get really nice young people that are even more energetic. Thank you, Millie.
The next, uh, budget tonight is historical. Bob, thank you for, uh,
Good evening.
Through a holiday.
I can make this short a lot. I wasn't born it, but I did.
How about Tim between that?
I did send a budget request in, sure that you got it.
Yep.
I just wanted to touch on the fact that, um, now we, uh, have, we're involved in eight town hall properties. The society actually, we own six and we have eight with the town hall. So Mass City Bowl House, Lawson Tower, Lawson Gates, Cover's House, Water Kind of the Hosted. There's no rental of those properties. So that can be thought about by you. The man house in bar and the lighthouse, they both have tennis. There's not much to come at the man house. We try to get money through CTC rather than. And the society owns the old Blackwell House, the Crystal GAI, schoolhouse, water town hall, sports, it was here. Cusworth Park and, uh, so our big projects now are obviously the lighthouse, which we were fortunate that CTC gave us some money. We also went to Mass Cultural Council. They gave us two hundred thousand dollars. And I joined a group called, we need the lighthouse lovers and convinced them to give us five thousand. And so we got a little bit there and.
And what is that going to do?
That, and they probably will be assigned to something, I think, or whatever. Yeah. So they were going to do, um, a tour. They went to, uh, capacity of a minus light and convinced them to go to Cituate. So they did. And it's kind of cool. I think I was the youngest guy by ten years, but anyway. So we've been actually, now that COVID is over, we're busy. We have concerts moving towards a Lawson Tower. Uh, third grade field trips again, which is great. Um, we're also involved with the South Shore Irish Heavens Trail. East arising memorial, we're involved in that. My next door neighbors involved in both of those. So I really kind of said no to that. Plus the sister cities, we got those tours around. We're involved with Sea Plymouth, the tourism. Fat Girls in the South Shore, we've got HGTV, Houses of the District in Cituate. They're doing two homes in Cituate. They've been at the museum and I actually had them, uh, at Dorothy's Cove versus Second Cliff on Irish music. We had Croneville now, the oldest dam in America is in Green Bush, right? Almost recorded dam. And we've done a lot of presentations at the GAI now that we don't have to do it on Zoom. One of our big projects is the Cutworth House. We had this dunk infestation. We had to take the furniture off, get it ionized, strip the wallpaper off the walls, seal the foundation. It's, and, uh, Dancy came through far as Jim. I kind of thanked the two of them. You guys are lucky that you have both of them, trust me. And we've done basically a lot of routine maintenance on our other sites to keep them up, looking good. We've done a pretty good job so far. So that's it.
Great.
Does that quick enough?
Yeah, like the beautification, you know, for the money that we, we assign towards this and maintain our historical properties is just off the charts. And it's all because of the effort of people like you and, and other members that really care about it so much and, and take care of it. Your time and energy and management of it. So, and thank you very much.
We've been involved with beautification and the ground as well, which is nice. The town looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Yes.
And CTC supported it over the years too.
Any questions?
Any quick questions for Bob? No?
Yikes. I'm going to run.
The budget is, uh, was thirty twenty, forty thousand two hundred last year. And it jumped considerably up to thirty nine thousand six eighty this year with some paramedic too.
So, um, Water Kind of the Campus Base.
Yep.
CTC, we, yeah, we have repairs of most of our buildings, but those are the two vehicles.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
What's the question, Erica? I almost got you. I almost got the other one. Um, just the status of the, um, selling contents. Is that Jim working on it?
We did go in. I will, this is a lot of stuff.
There's a lot of stuff.
I think tonight I had a meeting about, um, this week and next week.
Thanks.
All right, the last one for the segment. Way off schedule. I'm not sure what you kept on. Um, financial director now at Kellon, this is number one thirty five. Nancy Holt, director.
In case we're still telling things, that's what we're doing now and we just keep telling them. Um, well, the next message report that you haven't heard already. Well, the next monthly reports that you haven't heard already, I'm working on, trying to get the proper annual financial report done. At some point in my lifetime, the financial transparency software has to implement it. We still want to tweak that a little bit. And just working on permanent record preservation, which is general letters for the town, permanent records, and they, doesn't appear to have been found for several decades. So this past year, we got about fifteen years worth. It was just sitting in boxes in our office. And so when we pull, we'll keep it going and then start picking away at the older ones that are eleven by seventeen green bar paper, which were, I could thirty years, we can't read anyways, as long as you hope that somebody printed them with a new cartridge that day. The budget is thirty-two thousand dollars more than the prior year, thirty thousand, that is estimated contractual cost of living increases, my contracts, step increases. And then twenty-five hundred dollars more to continue the binding of the old general letters. And next year is our biannual actuarial study, which will also be due.
I think I can just fix these back and put it on.
So your budget last year was four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. It's gone up to four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Thirty, that is all contractual. And like you said, twenty-five hundred dollars more for your binding of the general ledger project. Any questions for Nancy? Yeah?
Yeah, what is the popular annual financial report?
Do you know our annual comprehensive financial report, the, the bigger book that we've gotten awards for, our popular annual financial report is a condensed version.
So regular people can read it? Is that so popular?
Yeah, I think it's along the lines of six to 10 pages. There's some out there that are forty. That to me is not a popular annual financial report that you would enjoy reading popularly. So just something very brief that, that the highlights. Has the change, you should tell me what's going on, kind of stuff.
And would that replace the annual report that we get? Because that's the last you come around, that's something else entirely.
This is something, something else entirely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Awesome, thank you Nancy.
Thank you.
All right, the next topic on our meeting is a change of town council, town administrator.
So briefly, I've informed that Cynthia Maura, Town Council, is leaving Murphy Hesse to an end. She is going to actually work for the municipality. The last time Murphy Hesse attorney left, that was Jim Toomey. At that point, the board decided to go up to bid for town council services. We went through the whole process. We retained Murphy Hesse Toomey. Like, hey, we discussed this, I know individually, so if the board wishes, this is a good time to put a bid package together, which we did after one from last year, of, sorry, 2016. We'll put it out again. I know Murphy will be assigning a new attorney to our account in the interim. But if the board's wish, I know we talked about whether we go up to bid and see who we get. It actually comes at a great time because it'll probably be half a dozen of the municipal attorneys will be at the MMA trade show. So you can kind of get a feel for them, see if the board wants to do it. And so we'll put it together and get going.
We did this last time, you know, staying with, with them. We can do the same this time, once we see the new attorney, they're gonna sign this too. But I think it's always good to get a new, just touch, and stay in touch with what's going on in the industry and what other people play and you're after. And as you know, when we have specialized stuff, we kind of go outside of general council for that as well. Any comments for Jim or questions? Maura, any thoughts?
I, I agree with you. I think we should evaluate who else is out there. And I just want to publicly say thank you to Cindy for all of her assistance over the past few years to the town of Citu.
There's no doubt, I'll reiterate that, Cindy, thank you for, for all of your advice and all of your time at town meetings and preparation. We couldn't have done it without you and best of luck. And Jim, why don't you take this? Do you need to vote?
I don't want, no, we just do it and start it up.
I have a motion, if you want my motion, to submit an R P.
Um, sure. Is it in the book?
Yeah, I know to submit a request proposal for town council services and do the additional efforts.
Second, Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
I am.
What's your name?
I'm local.
File local.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Condon?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next topic is bylaw review charge. Ms. Canfield had taken the lead and tried to get her on around what we need to do to get it to get it together?
Yes. So thank you, Mr. Chair. In the, in the backup, you have a summary. The reason that couldn't, we couldn't find a whole charge is because the bylaw commission is actually in our bylaws now, as, or in the charter as required committed. And so you didn't need to write a charge because it existed. So here's the dilemma. The language in, in the charter is for continuous ongoing review, no, I'm sorry, I'm gonna rephrase that, with a John Danning, that strike that, is to act as advisory board. So if somebody comes up and says, hey, we need to change something in the bylaws, the bylaw review committee is supposed to go, okay, let's think about it. And the other thing is to, to like capital, to give recommendations to town meeting about whether or not to accept proposed bylaws. It does not anticipate what we, we said we wanted to do, which is, let's do a wholesale review, see what's outdated, see what needs to be cleaned up, where we can improve things. So we can do it one of two ways. We can either put forth a, an amendment, town meeting, cap town meeting, revise the general bylaws so that they can add the substantial responsibility. Or we create just a brand new committee that is charged, and I propose for two years, we go that route, put them together for two, no more than two years, to do the wholesale thing, knowing that at the end of the day, they're probably going to recommend that the bylaws be revised to include this in their responsibilities. So I hope that was clear in the summary.
Yeah.
And I would, I, I don't, I think the intent is very clear. It's not in great conflict with what the commission has been defunct anyway for so long, that if we do it internally and setting up a separate committee, we end up in the same result at the end of the day. Because if we delay and have to put it out of town meeting, it just, it just delays the process more than anything. So I would recommend Plan B.
Yeah, I, the way I read it is we could probably just fill this committee and continuous review could be, we have none at all, start at page one to go.
Yeah. You think do it that simply? Okay, I wasn't sure if we had that authority and I wanted to make it clear.
Well, if it already exists, just get it up and running. It doesn't exist, there's no charge, there's no
But it, it exists in the bylaws. Yeah. In the by, and the charter, right? So it, it's in the charter.
It's in the
It's probably in the bylaws too. The language is very, the existing bylaws, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It is in the existing bylaws. So, and it says what it, but it, it is a, it is advisory? That was the only thing, I was getting really long, I got into the weeds and the one penis of it. The bylaws, as they are written, do not anticipate a wholesale review. The charge in the bylaws is, is to think about if somebody proposes something.
Well, it says continuous review.
No, that isn't mine proposed.
Right. I think it's probably getting ran in the weeds, but
Yeah, I know.
Define wholesale. There's, the committee's already been voted on by the town.
Right, it exists.
It already exists. You have people, as you said, like, take a look at it. That's exactly, of course, that's what any moral person would do, but we put on there, understand that's what they'd have to do.
Second, any other? Maura, do you have anything?
Hold on, am I off mute? Yeah. I'm just looking at the document again. Yeah, no, I'm just reading through. I mean, I don't mind appointing a committee, do we? Because nobody ever had signed up in the past to be on it anyway. So I think the way it's currently written is probably not very effective. Do we, are you recommending that the charter review committee become the bylaw committee, Karen?
No, no, in fact
Or just a whole new, a whole new committee?
I actually have a list of people that have called me that are interested in working on this, which is just, like, I love all these geeky people, so.
My only comment is, if, if we're going to use this language that you have written here, if we do go this way, that it should just be five, not five to seven, because if you end up with six, then you've got an even number.
It's not really voting.
Yeah, right now, the bylaws, five people for three-year terms overlapping. And it is an advisory body and it determines to town meeting. So I was just a little concerned because the bylaw, yes, we have this one committee, but the bylaw doesn't give the authority we want that to do right now. So if we want to be really wonky
What's the authority to look at the bylaws?
So at the top of that page, one and two, is what it says in the bylaws right now. But the paragraph before that says, "The bylaw review commission shall conduct a continuous review and analysis of the town bylaws and shall recommend and present to any town meeting such changes by amendment, addition, or deletion." I don't know how much more clear that would be. Oh, you're right. Right. As it shall be necessary. Okay. So we can use just what, as the bylaws are written now, is the new charge and post it then. Right. Much easier.
Well, and I, I guess my only question would be, Jim, in your experience, do these committees need access to legal advice and how does that work?
Sometimes, yeah, they shut them through me. I would ask that, or our town council happens to be
Right, right.
Yeah, the charter review, when they did that and it went through, and then as something came up, it goes, oh, we should probably ask council.
Right.
And just that, you know, put together a little list and then, and at that appropriate point said, Cindy, what do you think of these things?
Yeah, especially because if, if they're acting as an advisory board to help voters or group of voters wishing to introduce a proposed bylaw to town meeting, they, they probably need, would need some legal advice as to whether or not what they're proposing is legal.
Probably what they're doing, sometimes it's pretty basic, other times if you have council.
Many people on the charter review committee had, had actually done this before, looking at you, so there was some good experience here.
Yeah, I think we just didn't have the right group of people for a while.
No.
I knew who they were, they just weren't very effective, that's all. Nathan Douglas.
And? And we're buying Paddy Chris Road. Is this for the general bylaws or for the basic bylaws such as they are?
That's a great question. I think our authority is only for general. You would have to, okay, so the general bylaws, not for zoning. Zoning, or any of that other stuff.
No. Okay. I think that's a point that needs to be made.
It says general bylaws in the charge.
Yeah, well, I don't have the charge in front of you, Maura, so what can I say?
Yeah, no, I'm just telling you that is there, so.
The review committee in years past, if planning board came up with a bylaw, a change, or whatever, they were supposed to review it and make recommendations either back to the planning board or to town meeting. I know years and years ago, when my Donahue was chairman of the planning board, he went through all of the school zoning bylaws and updated and changed words and spelling, et cetera. And if you think that there were snores at town meeting, that brought it on. So
I don't understand that.
I can't either. But no, thank you for the clarification. It's not our bylaws, it's your general.
It's the town's general bylaws, yeah.
But let me ask you that question, then, is, so is that within the planning board's responsibility, is to keep the bylaws under your, have you updated and, and do this process?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we have two items that will be coming before the annual town meeting, concern parking and, there's one other, I don't know, common driveways. And so there's two, we didn't want to overwhelm you. And public care is soon.
So in theory, those should be reviewed by, yes, committee as well.
So it, it's actually a little more confusing to that, as I read again.
Yeah.
It says pursuant to this general bylaw, we can appoint a committee. And that committee is to conduct continuous reviews and analysis of town bylaws, which could be construed as zoning and any bylaws.
That was my point.
Which isn't a bad idea either, to have an independent board that gives their opinion on, on any bylaw that we're trying to pass.
And we've gone through these, as you know, I've been on the planning board often going for a while. And every so often, you have to tweak some of this stuff because sometimes it's too bad and sometimes it's not bad enough, with this wiggle room and all the rest of it. And a lot of it is interpretation.
Well, that's exactly what the charter wanted them, there was a whole bunch of stuff in the charter, we're like, this doesn't love the charter, but it needs to be looked at. And the bylaws are the appropriate place for that.
Right. But a lot of it has to do with, and it's wonderful to hear that you have people that are interested in doing this, it's a tremendous amount of time
Yeah.
to go through all of this. There's a lot of pushback.
I'll tell you, why don't we, somebody already crafted this
Send the bylaw.
Thank you, three hundred and sixty years ago. So why, why don't we follow what they said, right? And just, just try and enact this committee and try and give them the task of starting with the general bylaws to look at first. And then if it evolves into looking at, you know, I think it's a good idea when, when planning puts a proposal before town meeting, that you get another group of people that look at that. It won't be so overwhelming because you only usually do two or three maybe at a time.
So if we can populate this and get it up and functional again, and, and, and I agree, but as the initial is, let's start with the generals, otherwise it's too big an apple.
Oh, wrong.
Anticipating that when that task is over, are they going to turn to zoning or one of the other?
I don't even know.
Because that would be a question that the members will ask, that the potential members will ask.
I think it'll depend on the temperature of the group, you know? How, how much this task takes out of them and, and then on top of that, we're dealing with other bylaws that come before them from other things at town meetings.
The one that I get most asked about is the stormwater bylaw.
It's pretty hard to take somebody that isn't an expert at that and
Right. We haven't finished putting together the stormwater permit, zoning permit. First of all, there's time, is that the planning office has been so incredibly busy. And it is my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I think the feds, our EPA, are starting down new regulations that will supersede what's already there. And I know that there are huge complaints from the developers about stormwater and how many square feet, how big a lot, and this, that, and the other thing. Yeah, it's there. It's just a question of, there is so much to do in there. And if you're doing much, give us some talent.
You'll be the force at some point.
No. That would be, that sounds like a trend.
Yeah, did you, yeah, no, yeah. We should walk before we run. I think that's a great, it's like trying to play in the break of the Super Bowl.
No, I, I just want to make sure that our, we set the expectations of those who are alive very clearly, that I think we've set it, that we're going to start with the generals.
Well, they don't report to us. You know, they act as an advisory board to the town, not to us.
Right, it's like, that's a plan. We appoint them.
All right, so is the, is the sense of the board that we want to try and reenact this committee? And, and ask them if they want to begin with the general bylaws and
And so to your point, Maura, that it already is five members.
Yeah.
All right. So the charter range is exactly as written by the bylaws, we post that and See who shows up.
I don't think we need
I got a list. I got a list. I'll then say, show it.
There you go.
When do you want to do this? When would you want to regular equipment?
Well, that's, that's the very
In March, April?
So normally you post in April?
Usually advertised in, you know, March, April.
March, April.
Yeah, let's do it then. Great, thanks for doing that, Karen. Next topic is a discussion about the increase of the senior tax program to fifteen hundred dollars a year. Nancy Holt, Audience Corrector, and Town Attorney.
So I'd speed right to your needs for you. So the senior tax program, the minimum wage is going to increase to fifteen dollars an hour as of January first. We're asking that this, what board would consider raising We're asking that the split board would consider raising the reimbursement rate to $15 per hour for the senior tax workers. They cannot earn more than that by the statute that authorizes this. And therefore might increase the maximum benefit to $1,500 a year. This is the last time that we can increase this because the statute says they can't go beyond $1,500. So until this statute gets updated, this is as far as the town can go for the property tax program. And there is a cap that we can clearly vote of 30 participants, just so that the assessors could set the right amount for the overlay. And there you still will within that with only 18 participants in county in 2022.
The current rate is 1425 and requests to increase it to 15. Any questions, debates, none of them?
No, I think the impact's minimal, so we should support it.
Move to increase the senior tax work of payment program limit to $1,500 per year per participant, set the maximum number of participants at 30 per year and the rate per hour at $15, effective as of January 1st, 2023.
Second, Ms. Campfield, further discussion, seeing none, we will call a vote.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Well, it's an easy one. The next discussion and vote is adjustment to the fiscal year 2023 expenditure limits for master and law chapter 44 subsection 53 E and 1/2 for the senior center program and for the athletic fields revolving hall. Nancy?
So these revolving funds have an annual limit, so we do that annual town meeting every year. We did have two funds that exceeded that earlier last year and then June, we were at this time with the advisory committee making adjustments to those limits. I'm asking that you can do it again earlier this year, so you can plan for it. Advisor committee voted to increase the senior center revolving, which is the programs, from $70,000 to by $50,000 increase. And that's because they have a number of more programs that they're offering and has been a flexibility to do that. There is no funding that's required for this. They bring in fees, which is just an expenditure cap that they have to abide by. And then the athletic fields, at the time that the limit was set, we didn't know about the electricity costs. We never received a bill for electricity. Yeah, now since received those bills for electricity and the current $50,000 budget is woefully insufficient. The board has already voted to change those fees. So that would be seeking to raise that by $25,000 to $75,000. The advisory committee did vote that on December 1st, 8 to 0 in favor of increasing the limits.
Any discussion?
Yes, so help me understand this. The for all the, I know we have all these other revolving fund summaries. And this chart in back that you sent over to us, the remaining balance, that's just for this fiscal year, right? So.
To their limit, to their expenditure limit.
To their expenditure. And almost all of these carry or have a large balance.
This isn't their balance, this is their expenditure limit. So they, so for example, the senior center revolving, they have an expenditure limit of $70,000. So far, they've spent $34,000. So they can still spend another $35,000 under their limit when they would exceed the authorization provided by town meeting for expenditures.
So.
It's not in the fund.
So I ask permission, have we looked at some of these other expenditure limits? For example, solar array, right? We know it's going to bring in $600,000 every year. I mean, the sun's not.
Right.
Change that much.
I look at them every year.
Ten, ten years in a row, we're at $600,000 and our limit is 485. Rec program has $500,000 in it. And I guess my concern is that we keep having these humongous balances on some of these, so like solar array, those expenditures. I'm just afraid that we're not, that these expenditures aren't high enough, that we're not spending enough on either keeping electricity costs down or maintaining fields or other areas. That we're not just racking up what, what's our total balance in all of our different revolving funds, like $3 million?
Well, most of the revolving funds revolve, so like, except for the solar array of winter.
Yeah.
They spend $40,000 and they get $40,000 in fees.
Well, you know, I mean, rec department, they have, where are they sitting, about $500,000 closing funds?
This is not the balance in their fund. This is their expenditure limit. And the rec department has, especially the beach commission, the beach revolving has a higher limit because of the Maya Beach parking lot, there's no authorization to build, rebuild that parking lot that hasn't been done. So that limit has been set high so that they can actually do the project when it comes forward. Hopefully, it'll be in fiscal 2023, it will be in fiscal 24 now. You know.
Well, I think Andrew's question is particularly on solar array and wind turbine where there's $1 million in there and it's going to continue to grow at, you know, each of my, like, $250,000 a year. What do we, what do we, what can we do with that money?
So all of 53 E and 1/2 revolving funds are authorized by section 10260. I'm sorry, but I actually remember that for the general bylaws, I'm just getting, I'm still upset. But it specifies what money can go in, what money can come out, and who controls it. So for the solar array and wind turbine, it can pay for electricity costs if you so choose it to do so. It has not done so in recent years. The only thing that's coming out of there is the payments to situat solar and to situat wind and the voluntary talent payments, as well as $100,000 from each fund every year to offset the debit, the cost of the debt for the public safety complex and the middle school.
Right, which was voted at town.
It was voted at town meeting. That's something that financial forecast has held up, but it was never promised. So there's no vote that says that has to happen. You could discontinue it if you wanted to.
Andrew.
So, okay. Well, the beach, the beach revolving fund, right? Every year, we have a surplus because we're taking in the beach, taking in the beach sticker revenue. And it's going to be $550,000. And we're setting a limit of 485. So I get that we want to have, we want the gap to make sure there's some different expenditures. But we're still sitting on $600,000 in the beach sticker revolving funds. Right, $590,000.
And that's because of that, specifically for beach sticker, is because of that parking lot. That parking lot's probably going to take at least half of that.
Okay, so there's still $4 million.
Right, and then you have that for any other improvements you're going to make, such as for bathrooms or anything else.
Yeah, I guess it'd be helpful, part of this more is knowing, understanding, and thank you for sending this, having a better sense of kind of where those buckets are and how we're able to kind of allocate that and when it's fungible enough. Do you know what I mean? To me, like, the solar array is the one that is the most concerning, again, on all of these energy costs. You need to dip into that. When can they have?
So, so at the end of the, at the beginning of the spring, we're going to be looking at our year-end budgets going, our energy costs will take a roof. We could dip into that fund at town meeting and go do some of that money to cover our electric costs that we've had for this year. If they remain high, you can do that next year. Recreation revolving fund goes like this, right? Everybody signs up, we take it all the money, we pay for the programs, everybody signs up for the spring, signs up for the summer. So that's kind of almost a wave program depending upon when things come in and what we spend. So each one has kind of different expenditure periods, though. It's a little hard to say, is how this one works, this one, this one.
So in the future, revolving, we sold beach stickers up until June 30th and we paid the lifeguards July 1st on. Similar, similar, but. So I think.
It'll be like June 30th, it'll be here, and then it just starts to go down.
Well, I think for actual range, section 10260, you can see all the different funds and and you can just put that in your box.
So is there like, at the end of the year, it doesn't go to free cash, it just stays as retained or something?
There are two of them by the bylaw that they close out anything over $10,000 to the general fund. That's the planning board view revolving fund and the purpose. So those will, and that's usually like another $10,000 a year.
So maybe the balances of those would be something we'd like to see.
And I was, and I can give you a quarterly update on that if you want, or the annual update we did in June, I can give you another copy of that, whatever the board wants. You know, I love to print color charts. Do you want to print color?
What do you think, Andrew?
No, I can't. I think quarter, we're just a better sense to know. Because again, we have these requests and it's.
Right, yeah, we have heard it all the time, as Nancy said, if we give you, here are the balances of June 30th, the beach revolving is loaded.
Yeah, I think what we're looking for is how much is accumulated before, at the end of the season?
Right, the net.
And then what is the typical net surplus over the course of the year, if there is?
So you like what I do for the beach sticker revolving fund, which is just that fund over like a seven-year period?
Right, but obviously you've been able to accumulate money, things for parking lots and.
I like the way I said I've been able to accumulate money. I like that.
Well, you haven't said, hey, tell me to go spend some money.
Well, no, but that was the whole point. They were, the three parking lots and the Maya was the last one. And it's not, I don't think anyone realistically thinks it's still going to be the price it was when it was built two years ago.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying, I think that's what Andrew wants to get a sense of. Yeah.
There's certain ones that we know revenue is going to be pretty, the user fees for rec is going to be over $460,000. I mean, we're not going back 10 years ago. And, you know, user fees was $563,000. And yet we're capping at 40. I get it, I just want to know where those, those kind of more, we're not going to sell less beach stickers next year. Those fees are going to be the same.
Yeah, they actually, after COVID, because of COVID, they spiked it up and they stayed up there.
Well, but I think the piece we're missing now is Nancy knew that we were going to pay for these parking lots. So, you know, it's, it's, we had to build up reserves basically to come out of this fund. And it is asterisk because I missed it the first time. On the bottom of the revolving fund, it says X dollars.
I'll put some more stuff together for you on the revolving funds. Because it'll be, it'll come up in the warrant when you set the limits. And we can go over there.
Great, second. All right, I'll go now just increasing these two. And any further discussion on that? Then if not, I would.
Move to increase the expenditure limit of the master and law chapter 44 section 53 E and 1/2 senior program revolving fund is previously set by the April 2022 annual town meeting article 11 by $50,000 to $120,000 for fiscal year 23. And to also increase the expenditure limit on the master and law chapter 44 section 53 E and 1/2 athletic field revolving funds previously set by April 2022 annual town meeting article 11 by $25,000 to $75,000 for fiscal year 23. Second.
Second one, Ms. Conley, any further discussion? Seeing none, we will go all vote.
Mr. Minyan?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Thank you, Nancy. The next is new business and we have a discussion, vote to open the annual and special town meeting warrants. And this will be for the annual and special town meeting on April 10, 2023. Any discussion?
I think you may use a gabbling.
I don't think I've ever used a gabble.
I know, well, there you go.
Any questions on this? Have a motion to open them?
Move that the sub-board over the warrants for the spring annual and special town meeting will be held on April 10, 2023.
Second.
Second one, Ms. Campfield, further discussion? Jim, this just essentially opens the, the process so that citizens can put in their warrants and waiting for the budgets and when do we typically close it?
Two weeks.
Two months.
Again, it's a little early than we usually do, but the board asks them to prove everything out, so. We'll put it out when people know.
We'll call vote.
Mr. Minyan?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Great, next topic is a request to approve a one-day wine and malt license to fork in the road for a private event at Car Hall on December 23, 2022 from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Have a motion?
Let's move to approve wondering.
So, have a second? Second one, Ms. Conley? All right, all in, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, we'll call vote.
Mr. Minyan?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
We already voted the, you already voted Mr. Snyder to the what many points you voted here.
Good job, and now we have to discuss and vote on funds, all the annual renewal licenses.
Good job.
If we all take, take one, we can do it. So when we're just reading off your list in the.
It's right on the agenda.
Right on the agenda, right on.
Thought we could do it by category.
All right, so we're all going up this, ooh. This, this. All right, so there's three pages.
There's one I'd like to hold on to stop. When we get here across there.
Actual language needs to say, a motion to renew the renewal licenses for 2023, is that sufficient?
Yeah.
In the situation, Harper? Have a second?
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the first?
Me.
Okay.
Oh, no, I guess, I can.
It's okay, you can do that.
And further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Roll call.
We could roll call at the end.
Why don't we, yeah, should be roll call at the end?
Roll call at the end.
We'll read through them and then anyone that wants to hold one, just say it.
Would you like me to read this first page?
Sure.
Okay. Retail package store, all alcoholic for 2023. Leah Maya Liquors doing business as Greenwich Package Store, Inc. Kishan Inc. doing business as Cituit Package Store, Inc. Ford 143 LLC. Lighthouse Enterprises, Inc. doing business as Harbor Side Wine and Spirits. Retail package store wine and malt licenses for 2023. Holy Cross Investments doing business as 7-Eleven. New Harbor Corp. doing business as Driftway General Store. Malaney's Fish Market Corp. SHGS LLC doing business as Sand Hills General Store. MFJ Market, Inc. doing business as the Village Market. Restaurant wine and malt licenses for 2023. Cosmos Cafe LLC. Restaurant all alcohol licenses for 2023. Front Street Cituit LLC doing business as Chopsticks and Porcs. Grateful Haven, Inc. doing business as River Shed. Green Eye Lady, Inc. doing business as Galley. Hibernian Tavern, Inc. Milde, Inc. doing business as Barker Tavern. Nana Enterprises LLC doing business as the River Club. O'Callaghan's LLC doing business as the Voyage. Salt Society, Inc. doing business as Salt Society. Situate Tavern, Inc. doing business as Situate Tavern. Legacy Management doing business as Mill War Restaurant. Restaurant Oro doing business as Oro. McColsky, Inc. doing business as TK O'Malley Sports Cafe. The Vine Mar LLC doing business as The Vine Mar. The Drift Inn, Inc. doing business as The Drift Inn. Club All Alcoholic licenses for 2023. Situate Post 3169, the VFW, Inc. Situate Harbor Yacht Club. Situate Country Club, Inc. Harbor League Golf Club, Inc. Club Wine and Malt licenses for 2023. Situate Rackets and Fitness, Inc. And Farmer Series Corn Permit for Malt Licenses for 2023. Untold Brewing LLC. Do the next one.
Second.
Okay, so Andrew, second on these.
Second. Further move to approve a common liquor license for 2023. The Inn at Situate Harbor, Ford 143 LLC. CDW Enterprises doing business as Coffee Corner. Chateau Moraix, Searcy's Frado. Cosmos Cafe LLC, CP's Wolffire Pizza. Ecomi. Doing business as Press Pizza. New Harbor Corp. doing business as Driftway General Store. Gateway Donut LLC doing business as Dunkin' Donuts 32 Driftway. Gateway Donut LLC doing business as Dunkin' Donuts on Way Front Street. Green Eye Lady, Inc. doing business as Galley. Harbor House Pizza, Harbor Side Nutrition LLC. Hennessy Dudes, Holy Cross Investments doing business as 7-Eleven. Leah Maya Liquors doing business as Green Bush Package Stores, Inc. Lucky Finn LLC doing business as Lucky Finn 206 Front Street. Lucky Finn Cafe LLC doing business as Lucky Finn 4853 Driftway. Persian Inc. doing. Persian Inc. doing business as Cituit Package Store. Polski Inc. doing business as TK O'Malley Sports Cafe. MFJ Market Inc. doing business as The Village Market. Milde Inc. doing business as Barker Tavern. Mike's Cituit Harbor Inc. doing business at Sam's. One the harbor. Malaney's Fish Market Corporate Restaurant Oro doing business as Oro. And uh, Juana's doing business as Malaga's Pizza. Quench Juicery LLC. R C S J R Inc. doing business as Dribbles, Ford Brook Street. R C S J R Inc. doing business as Dribbles through sixty-seven Cannon Road. S H G S LLC doing business as Sand Hill General Store. Cituit Tavern Inc. doing business as Cituit Tavern. The Cituit Racket and Fitness Inc. S A I Convenience Corp. doing business as Dad's Place. San Nam Inc. doing business as Ronnie Shannon General Store. Star, Starland Bakery LLC, Front Street LLC doing business as Chopsticks and Forks. River Golf Club Inc. I'm Buryan Tavern Legacy Management doing business as Mill War Restaurant. O'Callaghan's LLC doing business as The Voyage. Nana Enterprises doing business as River Club. Grateful Haven LLC doing business as Riverside. Salt Society Inc. doing business as. Salt Society, Cituit Country Club, Cituit Harbor Yacht Club, The Drift Inn Inc. and The Vine Mar LLC.
Number one.
Untold Brewing LLC, Cituit Post thirty-one sixty-nine, the V F W Inc. and XR Foods LLC doing business as Crossroad Sandwiches.
Second on that? Someone?
Second.
Second one, Ms. Canfield? Maureen, want to read, or Karen, don't want to read that?
Uh, guaranteed licenses for twenty twenty-three. Green Eye Lady Inc. doing business as Galley. Everidge Golf Club Inc. Hibernian Tavern. Lucky Finn LLC doing business as Lucky Finn two oh six Front Street. Milde, um, Inc. doing business as Barker Tavern. Legacy Management doing business as Mill War Restaurant. O'Callaghan's LLC doing business as Voyage. Nana Enterprises doing business as River Club. Great, uh, Grateful Haven LLC doing business as Riverside. Salt Society. Cituit Country Club Inc. Cituit Country, Cituit Harbor Yacht Club. McColsky Inc. doing business as T A TK O'Malleys. Untold Brewing LLC, Cituit Post thirty-one sixty-nine, the V F W Inc. The Vine Mar LLC, The Drift Inn Inc. Septic, Septic Disposal Licenses for twenty twenty-three. All Town Inc. Ronby Inc. doing business as, uh, K R Anderson Plumbing Company. Arizona Davis Sanitary Company Inc. P F Spencer Junior Inc. C S, but, Dorito Inc. McGongo Systems. Bowling and Electronic Games License for twenty twenty-three, Cituit Bowl, Bowlway. Class two licenses for twenty twenty-three. Alfred Foil doing business as Seacrest Auto. Driftway Auto Inc. McBriens Gynecostic Group appears. Cituit Shell Inc. Class three.
That's right there.
Second.
Second on all of those? Um. What do we, uh, okay. Andrew, you want to have the discussion on the last three?
Yeah, there's, there's been some concerns raised about. About where you should repair shop being in a, I still. I'm gonna be. Wanted to grant a license, but I wanted to bring this up. Being in a watershed location and there's some concerns from the public about possibly. The maintenance of that facility that I think has a board. Everything all determined by that, that we should at least investigate or just look at. What could be done? I just don't want to go without us mentioning it and talking about it. Um, it's one of the issues corner.
Where's it located, Andrew?
That's the one, West End. That's the one, it's the one by issues corner there, that, um.
Oh, okay, yep.
Repair shop.
Mm-hmm.
And so just want to. I don't know what our authority is to do, but I just wanted to raise concern.
I'm buying Pan Chris Row. Applying to our stolen bylaws. Establishment and repair or trailer trucks machinery are found in implements is not allowed in residential district. And city armbody shop, why that all is conducted within a completely enclosed building. It's not allowed in a residential district. Now, I understand there's a certain amount of grandfathering involved and maybe some research needs to be done on this. But it's one thing to have a repair shop, it's another thing to have. Basically, done. Because that's what it is. In a water resource protection district.
When does, when does the license technically expire?
December thirty-first.
Okay, one more meeting?
Well, December twentieth is the next meeting, and certainly we scheduled that. I think this is a zoning issue. Um. I don't know how it's zoned.
There's a, there's a couple of different issues. Is it pre-existing before zoning? Pre-existing non-conforming, then the zoning doesn't apply unless of course you allow the non-conforming use to last more than two years and then the non-conforming use goes away. Is it just a dump property? Because we have those other parts of town, it's very difficult for us to, when it makes someone clean up their property unless. Constant to direct, intermediate threat to public health, the public safety. And there's, there's a couple of those in town, Egypt Beach Store. So, so there's a couple, so we can try to dig into this a little bit more. Uh, but just because it's a, it's a mess, doesn't necessarily mean we have any authority to go clean it up. I have no idea what business, business he's actually doing out there, whether he's class three's junk. Basically junk cars, so taking cars, selling pops, I, I don't know, I have to get some information about.
What does the class three cover?
Again, it's, it's basically junk salvage.
It is.
Yeah. Class one is new, class two is used, and class three is whatever's left.
What is Ryan Allen LLC? The other one, Lieutenant.
That would be his, whatever the company is that.
Show, anyone know what that is?
Ray? I mean, I've been giving the definition wrong, it's, I just don't. So, I mean.
Do you have the address of Ryan Allen, what's in here?
Are we issuing two class three licenses tonight?
Yes.
So there's two?
Correct.
Because it seems like there's a Ryan and a Ray.
I'll tell you what, let's, let's not do this tonight. And Jim, can you get a little more information on it?
Yeah, I'll try.
And if maybe, maybe we can get, um. Y'all are coming and. What's your address? Oh, behind, what's your dress?
There isn't.
This is Google.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Do you select two cars?
The gas station under first car.
Yeah, sir, that's behind, uh.
The gas station, that first car, sure.
Yeah.
So the definition of class three Massachusetts steel license is it's a junk license. It's fine used motor vehicles to remodel, take apart, rebuild, and sell.
Even though they've been there for forty years.
That's what the license is. It's issued by the state of Massachusetts. And then we do the local process.
So he has one from the state of Massachusetts.
Right.
Which would allow him to conduct business.
Yes, I mean.
And if we don't issue it, and he's out of business, is that right?
He still gets, he has one from the state. So this is, is this just a town cat and a little fee?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, no, I mean, you know. At, at the end of this, I, I wanted to thank everybody, I mean, it's a lot of work doing all these licenses. Jennifer Gagin did all these licenses, worked with every business. Cituit Fire Department does, uh. Inspections, Cituit Police Department, Sergeant Jerry O'Brien, Building Department does all these inspections. We have a whole list from every department that these have all been inspected, insured. All the paperwork has come in. Uh, Bob and Neil do that, and Building Department, the other, the public health inspections. So all these inspections have been done for every one of these businesses on this list today. A lot of work goes into this. So I think, I mean, you, you know, it's up to the board, what, what to do.
So I, I think we want to hold this one, this sense of.
You want to hold a class three license?
Just a class three license.
Okay.
Um, we can.
Okay, I'll open the class three licenses on the next agenda. For twelve twenty. Along with a few stratters we have that haven't come in yet.
And I'll speak with the building inspector and see what, learn a little bit more about this.
And so everything had a second, so we need a, um.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Pass.
For all of the renewal licenses. So, Mr. Miniani? With the exception of the class three licenses. So this is the roll call vote for approval for everything except the class three licenses.
Right.
Mr. Miniani?
Yes, but I just want to note that I'm a member of Cituit Country Club and I do not believe that it pairs my going and roll on this.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes, but I was thinking about the Cituit Harbor Yacht Club and the Haddling Golf Club.
You can still vote, I've looked it up, it's not.
All right, what do you say then?
That's fine. It's just a new license.
Not issuing a new license, you're just remailing it.
And even if you were issuing a license. But anyway, I'm sorry, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's four in favor and one next. Five, it's you. And we'll, we'll put the class three on next, next, uh, our agenda. Thank you for doing our reading. Um, oh. Please.
The liaison.
But, but, uh, other business now, liaison reports?
The, uh, I'm sorry, uh, the, uh, Pier Forty-four, whatever redevelopment committee, um, has been hosting meetings and they're open to the public. They're done on Zoom, so if people are interested in, uh, what the status is. The consultants have been very actively looking at the entire site to see what is possible, what is not possible. What is feasible within all the regulations, et cetera. So, um, if you're interested in it, um, I encourage people to look on the town agenda, uh, the town website and zoom into the meeting.
We've received a lot of calls about. A question of relocation of the bandstand for businesses in town.
Well.
I don't know if you can speak to that.
Relocation of the bandstand what?
People have been calling the office, asking about the plans for the bandstand and relocation to the new Pier. Uh, Forty-four location.
What I can tell you is the Pier Forty-four committee is looking at every possible option. And one of the, one of the options that had been mentioned by a number of people was the issue of the bandstand. And as a member of the Cold Parkway Redevelopment Commission, I know that that's going to come up as well. Um, so at this point, who knows what's going to happen, and that's why I'm encouraging people, if they have a chance to, to zoom, to zoom into the, um. Pier Forty-four. Cituit Harbor redevelopment, maybe, uh, so that they can get up to speed on what the discussions are. And I will preface that by saying, everything is very much in the discussion stage. And we all know that the bandstand is in very poor shape and needs to be addressed, but at this point, nobody has any answers about that.
So anyone interested, you can participate in meetings.
Yes, 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 they should make their opinions known. I know some people think it should stay where it is, I think some people think it shouldn't stay there, I think some people think it's an historic property, which it is not. Um, so, but this is where the, the Cituit Harbor Redevelopment Committee is where the discussions are being had right now. And that includes the issue of the bandstand.
Very interesting meeting, I was on the meeting the other night.
Yeah, I agree.
Talking about any type of, if you want to put a visitor center there, it's going to be at eighteen feet. Which means that the ramp would be like sixty-eight feet long to get into.
To put it in the harbor?
To put it on the site of Pier Forty-four. Because that's, that's the height that the buildings have to be there. Uh, and then they spent a lot of time talking about bathrooms and, and.
It's elegant.
It could just be a ridge.
They were really, what they, what they were talking about for bathrooms would be, uh. The, uh, the trailer bathrooms are really nice. Trailer bathrooms that you could put there in the summertime, wouldn't have to go up eighteen feet, pull them out in the wintertime, so they had a lot of conversations about that.
They had to go eighteen feet?
Um, that, that would not.
Oh, no.
Okay.
The, the consultants have been very, very, they're, they're very diligent.
It was a very good presentation.
Um, and, and in fact, what, what, the point of having a real consultant doing this. Is that everyone's got fifty million ideas about what we should do down there, but when it comes down to it, it's really an engineering problem down there. And what we wind up doing, uh, I, I know that a building down there is just not going to happen. It's just not.
Are the possible, right, right, that's the best way to.
But, you know, when you have real engineers.
It's an engineer, right, no.
And you have people who know the regulations, know the water waste regulations, they know building codes, they know.
It was, it was a very good presentation, very eye-opening.
Yes.
And I jumped over the, the body of the board, but. My only two cents were, just remember, whatever you want to do down there, someone's going to take care of it, so.
Well, that's about years ago, maybe even a decade ago. We didn't look at rebuilding Pier Forty-four because of that, but that's why you have, if you want a building there, it's got to be that structure.
Yeah.
It's a part of that structure.
And that structure, as it is now, isn't going to last. And if we put a certain amount, over a certain amount of money into it, we trigger all of the various.
Over fifty percent of the value of the building.
Right. So, but it's.
The building doesn't have a lot of value.
This has been very useful and the, the consultants will be very visible over the next few weeks with the various constituencies that, you know, need to be brought into this.
I might have the presentation if I have else, and then I'll split.
I was going to say, was it recorded, Karen?
I don't, no, no.
Okay.
No, but they do have a presentation, in fact, they're going in front of the, uh, CPC on Monday night and doing a presentation. And just so everyone's aware, the money that they're looking for from CPC is for to get to final design and bid documents. So they're not looking for the entire mon- money by any means, uh, so there will be a lot of opportunity for couple input.
Great.
And I meant the Cituit Harbor Business District, I'm sorry, I need a question.
No, that's all right, well, it's, uh, the Cituit. They're just at the beginning. They've just had, we've, we just had the engineers, et cetera, go down and actually look at the site. So, you know, I think everyone needs a little patience till we get to the point where we know what is feasible and what is not. And we've now reached, we've now reached the point where we know a building just isn't going to happen down there, no matter how we pray about it. Um, and, but there's. They're slowly but surely getting to the point where we've got answers to some of the technical questions.
I just sent everybody, we'll have the presentation the other night, so you should get.
And that's why I'm encouraging people to come and listen to the Zoom meetings, and you can participate if you want.
It was I opened.
Yeah, um, thanks to Seth and Cituit Gable, the commission of disabilities and the accessibility awareness ages ago, but it's all on, it's in, pushing out YouTube, it's amazing, and thank you, Seth. Great work, guys, to, to help with that.
More?
Um, tomorrow night, the Affordable Housing Trust Committee will do a final review of the thirteen or so, actually, I think it might have been eleven that were final from the small grant. Applications, so folks should be hearing soon after those are reviewed, which is great news. Um, and that's it, there's an E, uh, there's a D E I meeting next Tuesday, um, as well. That's all I have for that.
Uh, just a reminder that, um, it's just going to mention on next Tuesday, yeah, next Tuesday, the thirteenth is the E D C Community Forum. There are twenty-five groups that signed up to come to this. So people are really interested in having this conversation, Mr. Vidro will be a featured speaker along with.
Captain.
Senator, oh, Senator O'Connor and the reformer from, um, Subshore Chamber will do a little, a little thing. Um, and I do want to mention, and I don't know if you wanted to, um. Andrew and I given Jim a draft of a shelf, like a shelfish history, a fact sheet. That just says, here's where we started, here's what, you know, just the facts man, um, that, you know. Jim has a chance to look at it, that, um, will be available for the board so that we can, the whole history on one just paper to sort of combat some of the nonsense that we've heard out there. And I think you have a final document to review. Yeah, I'm very lucky for it.
Karen, did you say we do have the document, or you're going to get them to us?
Jim's, Jim's got a draft right now of, of fact sheet and, um.
Oh, Jim does, okay.
Yeah. And the response to, I mean, not just stuff on everyone's desk, but the, the response to Colacid is in Mr. Miniani's inbox or released hopefully shortly.
Which he got today.
I'll do a high copy.
Yeah, just a higher copy in the cloud.
We won that.
Speaking of shelfish, um, I, I believe. Speaking of shellfish, um, I, I believe there's a meeting coming up, it's gonna be Zoom, I think, above the North River, Clem, Shellfish Edges.
There's a meeting on that, and then, uh, uh, shellfish wouldn't move in on the plane.
So there's potentially some good news coming.
That's just some good news that we have in our office and fish fishing and, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's better, it's not, not everything, a lot of good work.
Mike Devance has been working very hard on that, so.
Other side of town.
There's a Zoom meeting next week, and then I'll be in the sales. So it's a small schedule then.
Great, um, and the only thing I was gonna add, and I just want to thank, um, a couple of people, and that is the Rugby Club. Had an event last week at, um, at, uh, Barker Tavern with a, a bunch of kids who were all pushing it, it was just a spectacular event, and they did so much more, and Barker's just so gracious in terms of hosting and, and and sponsoring this thing, so it was, it was a great time there.
Was Santa there?
Santa was there, and so.
And Mrs. Claus?
And Mrs. Claus was there.
Yes, they were there last year, too.
Um, and then also, first Friday was last week. And, uh, just thank you for all the, all the people that, that hosted stuff there, in, hosted the tree lighting, and then all the, um, you know, all the, uh, businesses were all going for sale and stuff, and again, promoting everyone to shop local. Um, it helps all of our, our local, um, businesses and residents. And then also, lastly, North Cituit on the sixteenth is having their Christmas in the Village, um, from four to seven, the evening on the sixteenth, which is a day, it's actually, next, oh, week from this Friday. So go to North Cituit and enjoy that as well. Well, Matt, any other notes or comments?
What correspondence?
Yeah.
Did you say yes?
Yes, please.
Uh, quick.
Yes, please.
Two, two, uh, quick, uh, pieces here. Um, the, uh, schools were advised, um, this week from the M S B A. Um, and they worked and selected a designer, they received three bids. Um, and they're putting forth door and Whittier for the design services for Hathley, um, the Hathley Elementary School, so they're making progress there. And then, um, our Sister Cities are having their annual Jo, Joyo Nobel, uh, movie, uh, Extravaganza, um, which is going to take place on Tuesday, December thirteenth at six P M. Um, at the Cituit Senior Center, so a new venue this year. Um, so everybody get out and enjoy some nice holiday, um, movies on the thirteenth. And that is all I have, unless there's anything additional that I may have listed. No, that's it.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes. Move to accept the Minister Select Board meeting held November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. And move to accept and not release the executive, executive session, Minister Select Board Executive Session, held on November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Check.
Second, Ms. Campbell, further discussion? See none, we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Van Nellie?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
All right. Uh-oh, that's unanimous, I'm zero, lastly, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn and assign documents?
So, second.
Roll call vote?
So, Van Nellie?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night, thank you for filming this evening.